I'd like to call the regular meeting of the city, Bellflower Council, to order Monday, August 25th, 2025 at 5:30. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santinas.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here. All right, item three, Ryan, could you introduce the closed session items to the record?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, there are three items that the council has asked to close session for. Item 3A, conference with labor negotiator. 3B, conference with real property negotiator. 17416 to 17422, Bellflower Boulevard. And item 3C, conference for real property negotiator regarding 9526 Oak Street.
I do have a recusal on item 3B, a property conflict with my employer owns property within 500 feet.
3B, anyone else with the recusals?
Mr. Mayor, Coops is out on C, 3C, have a property within the discussed property here.
Anyone else? Yes, that's why I thought I better look. And I got a conflict on item 3B due to a property within 500 feet.
Let the record show Sunny has no conflicts?
Yeah, so Wendy's recusing from 3B for the record, Dan Coop for the record, 3C, and then myself, Ray Dunn, recusing from 3B. No public comments because nobody's in the audience. Okay, we'll recess to closed session, guys and gals.
So is your 3C?
All right, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, August 25th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. And let the record show, we've reconvened from, to open session from closed session, and there was no reportable action. And with that, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santinas.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here. All right, at this time, we're gonna have everybody rise for the invocation led by Councilmember Victor Sanchez and the pledge of allegiance by Brian McNerney, our Director of Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. We thank you. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talent, abilities, and the time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and mishaps or missteps are used for good. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those who we will encounter afterward, ready as to make every moment count. Amen.
Amen.
Everyone, please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna go into city council announcements and presentations. I'll start with the first announcement. Join us this year for the State of the City, which I'll be honored to host on October 2nd, which is a Thursday, at 11:30 AM at the Main Event Center located at 16400 Bellflower Boulevard. This annual event is an opportunity for us to come together as a community to reflect the progress that we've made over the past year and share the vision and the goals that will guide Bellflower's future. It's a time to celebrate our consciousness, acknowledge the challenges that we've overcome, and look ahead for optimism and purpose. And the tickets are $50 per person and are available now through September 17th. You can purchase tickets online at www.bellflower.california.gov or in person at Sims, Thompson, or Cruthers Parks. For additional information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2267. I hope all of you can join us for this important occasion. Okay, Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Los Angeles County Fire Museum invites the community to join a 9/11 remembrance ceremony on Thursday, September 11th, at 10:00 AM. This public event will honor the lives lost and pay tribute to the heroes who responded during the tragic events of September 11th, 2001. The ceremony will be held at the Los Angeles County Fire Museum located at 16400 Bellflower Boulevard. Parking will be available across the Main Event Center in the parking structure. For more information, please contact guest relations at 562-325-3069. That's all, hi, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santinas. Councilmember Wendy Morse.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The city of Bellflower is in the process of developing its first urban forest master plan, a comprehensive roadmap for the growth, preservation, and management of our community's trees and green spaces. This plan goes beyond beautification. It plays a critical role in addressing climate resilience, supporting public health, and enhancing the overall quality of life in Bellflower. Community feedback is essential to this effort, and we invite all residents to participate by completing a short online survey. Your input will help shape the city's long-term vision, goals, and priorities for a greener and more sustainable future. Your voice matters. The survey will close on September 15th. To participate in the survey, please visit bellflower.ca.gov. For additional information, please email Wlee, that's W-L-E-E, at bellflower.ca.gov. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wendy Morse. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Registration is now open for the Asociación de Emprendedoras, a free eight-week program offered in Spanish that helps business owners and residents learn how to start, grow, and operate a business, designed for both current entrepreneurs and those preparing to launch their first ventures. The program provides practical strategies in a supportive collaborative setting. It's a valuable resource for anyone seeking to expand their business knowledge and connect with others in the community. Classes will be held on Wednesdays beginning September 10th through October 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Bellflower City Hall Green Room located here at 16600 Civic Center Drive. Space is limited, and registration is now open. Please call 714-627-2671 or 562-804-1424, extension 2010 for more information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City of Bellflower is pleased to announce that applications for the Bellflower Leadership Experience and Development, it's called LEAD, L-E-A-D, is now open. This program offers high school students a valuable opportunity to gain real-world experience by working alongside parks and recreation staff while developing essential leaderships and life skills. Participation in the LEAD program is an excellent way for students to make a meaningful impact in their community. Applications will be accepted through September 22nd. For more information, please contact 562-804-1424, extension 2268. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. All right, we're gonna have a presentation by Kingdom Causes Bellflower, and that'll probably be Andrew. And you're gonna do a PowerPoint. Okay, got it all handled, great. When you're ready, take it away.
Respected council members and everyone else here, hi, my name is Andrew Saniklis. I am part of the Kingdom Causes Bellflower team, currently the Executive Director, and the city of Bellflower is one of our strongest partners. And so I'm here to give a year-end report of the 2425 fiscal year and then tell you a little bit about what we're hoping for in this next fiscal year. So, there we go. So Kingdom Causes Bellflower, just to remind everyone, our mission is to mobilize the community and provide transformative services so that all of our neighbors have a place to live, work, and belong. And so we put everything that we do in one of those three buckets. And so our current strategic programs of the 2425, carrying over to 2526 fiscal year, it's a place to live, so we have housing and homeless services, rental assistance, homeless prevention. We also have a transitional home for families who are homeless that's located here in the city. We have a work bear removal program called Good Soil Industries. We have a second chance hiring program for folks that are struggling to get back in the workforce. Typically, we're focusing on homeless or ex-addicts, ex-felons that are doing what they need to do, they just need a helping hand to get some bears removed. And then a place to belong, so we have our community building initiative, our community center on Bellflower Boulevard, open Monday through Thursday. It's full access center available for anyone that has the needs for the resources that we have. And so specifically, our place to live, our programs, housing navigation, case management, homeless prevention, and so we currently have four cities. I'm happy as a Bellflower citizen to say Bellflower is our biggest partner out of the four cities. We have four cities that contract with us to do housing navigation and case management for their citizens. And then again, Margaret's House, which is our privately owned and operated transitional home for families with minors who are homeless. In the 2425 fiscal year, we were able to prevent 30 households from losing their housing, and then 10 homeless households moved off the street. And so we take a two-pronged approach. We try to get folks off the street into some kind of housing, permanent housing or shelter, and we also try to prevent folks that are about to be homeless from being homeless through rental prevention and protection in that way. And this is just, those numbers are just our Bellflower numbers, so it doesn't include the other three cities. Place to work, so Good Soil Industries, our biggest partner there was LA Rise through Rio Hondo AJCC. We have that as a partner, but the main folks that we are helping are mostly Bellflower residents because they're just the ones that are right here able to be a part of the program. So 2425, we had 51 individuals that we enrolled in the program. 22 of those individuals acquired full-time employment. None of those individuals were New Hope residents. Some of those were able to utilize the employment and also get permanent housing and get off the street. Our numbers the last two years were good that they increased our grants. LA Rise did the last two years because we were meeting and exceeding the set goals that we had had, so it looks really good for us and for Bellflower. And then place to belong, so we have a bunch of different things that we do. Housing Support Group, so one of the things is, once folks are housed, this idea of having support in order to retain their housing, and so we have a regular meeting support group to where anyone that's utilized any of our programs can come, get a free meal, get support. Margaret's House, again, hosts a bunch of different community events. We have a lived experience advisory board that is made up of folks who have been housed for a sustainable amount of time that utilized our programs and now are advising our Board of Directors. And so they help to make sure that what we're doing actually still makes sense, that we still kinda got our ear on the ground as we were trying to keep helping those folks that need help. Do a bunch of things like hygiene kit packing parties, where hygiene kits are one of the main things folks will come in, help build their trust. And then we have started doing monthly homeless outreaches into the city and the riverbed just to try to spread the word and get more resources out there. 2425, we had 1,617 individuals receive supportive services in our community center, and so there's a list of some of them that are there. Community Center is mostly supported by funding that we no longer have in the 2526 fiscal year, but it's funding through different community service programs and providers that we have. But we have everything from ID vouchers, hygiene kits, we have utility assistance programs through so-called Edison and gas company. We have resource lists, we have computers and phones there, there's always food. We have individuals that are utilizing our other programs that can receive their mail there, and so help them get document ready for future things that they need. Different support groups, Bible studies, life skills training like work-life balance, financial planning, training, and then we have community listens sessions that we'll host there as well. And so a lot of this problem-solving fund that we have for this is mostly individual donors, churches, and we got a couple of community, small community grants that help us utilize these programs throughout the year. Just lastly, some of the hurdles that we see in the next few fiscal year, just to give you kind of an idea, and so there's been a reorganizing of funding strategies and structures in our area, and so a lot of loss of workplace development funding. So LA Rise was just under 200,000, stopped, the program stopped completely. Community funding, we had about 180,000 in community funding from a few different sources that no longer is available, that we had gotten both of these for many years before this fiscal year. And just a certain uncertainty of social services in LA County, so you're aware, there's just a lot of unknown. It's likely gonna settle like it usually does, and it'll make sense, and there'll be parts for us to be able to utilize, but it's gonna take a little while to do that. So in that time, we're just trying to do the best we can for as many people as we can with that. And so, kinda some of the things that we're excited about going forward, so this will be our 25th year, so we officially started a 501(c)(3) in 2001, so 2026 will be our 25th year of being around. We still have a heart for the least of those, we still feel like we're better together, and we still value this longstanding partnership that we've had with the city. We were able to lock in ICMS, which is Intensive Case Management Services, which is a program that we have through DHS that will help us reach some of those really hard-to-reach homeless individuals that need a lot of extra help and attention. And so we have 20 slots that Kingdom Causes Bellflower has to reach those folks. That's really gonna help us hit some of the people that we see around the city quite a bit and a lot, and so we're already starting to do outreach and get them in there and just hoping and praying that they will accept the help and the services. But that's a big win, and that whole department is looking good, and our team that's doing that is doing well, and we're hoping to even get another 20 cases before the end of the first fiscal year, so we'll have 40 total there. And then just strong partnerships with city of Bellflower, other cities, but again, you guys stepped up just in the last few months, your team here, Jim and Carla and everyone, you, of course, the council, and Lynn and Ryan, and if I didn't name you, I care about you and I'm grateful for you also, but the city really kinda stepped up in a need where we're like, man, we're not really sure. Like personally, as the Executive Director, I was like, I think I'm losing half my staff because everything's changing last minute and it's unknown. But through, you know, we believe God always makes a way, and through that, you guys have increased the budgets across the board, and hopefully that's because you've continued to learn and trust that we are trustworthy with the resources that we're stewarding, and you're seeing the results and the changes. We got a new on-call landscaping agreement with the city, which was huge for Kingdom Causes Bellflower, so you'll see our guys going around and doing bits and pieces of the city property, which has been really great. So we were able to hire a full-time team that is the best of the participants. Now we can hire into full-time work instead of necessarily having to find other places, which has been great. And then we're excited about future opportunities, which I believe I am handing it off. Oh, there it is. There, there, okay.
I kinda feel bad, Andrew, you didn't mention me by name, but.
I know. I knew there's people, everyone, everybody. Definitely, Brian.
So to kinda piggyback off of what Andrew was talking about, obviously, we're very happy with their services that they render here in Bellflower and looking to increase those services here. So we've been in communications with Kingdom Causes over the last few months, really on two key points, is we want to bring in their outreach services to sort of complement our B's team, which is still up and going as we speak, which is our homeless engagement team. Andrew's team would go out ahead of time, do the best they can to get those in need of services, the services that they are desiring, and hopefully get them off the streets. Second component to that is, we obviously have a lot of service providers here in the community, which they're, all their services and their coordination is not quite the best. So we're hoping to get Kingdom Causes onboard, coordinate all those services, which all those different service providers provide, and be able to provide one sort of one-shop-fits-all type of model that someone who is in need of those resources can know where they need to go to, and those services are coordinated to the best of their ability. So we're hoping to partner up at a future date with Kingdom Causes to increase those services, so for the city council, that's something that's coming in the future, which you'll probably see at some point coming before you.
That's all, I just thank you, council and city of Bellflower. We can help more people because you're willing to trust and help us, and so we appreciate it. And then available for questions now?
Anybody have any comments for Andrew or questions?
I also have Jason, Director of Housing Programs, and Gina, Director of GSI here, if you wanna ask them questions.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me? Oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Andrew, for your report. It's always refreshing to hear a report, good numbers. I have one question I have. When you said about a place to live, doesn't Kingdom Causes own properties for rent?
Well, we have one property, it's our Margaret's House, which is the two.
No, other than Margaret's House.
So we have one other property that's low-income housing.
I think you should add that.
Yes, low-income, yes, we do have Oak Street property that's low-income housing.
One of your credits.
Yes, you're correct.
I think you should acknowledge that.
Yes.
It's good for people to know about it, so.
Yes.
Okay. And then your slide about, can you go back to the challenges or something like?
Hurdles?
Can you elaborate on the uncertainty of social service in LA County? In my watching the news lately, I kind of anticipate that there's not much money coming from the federal government to California. I was wondering, how will that impact your services to the in-house population?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we've already seen an impact on just a lack of funding or loss of funding. I don't know how it's gonna go in the future, I don't know anyone really knows for certain. And so we've seen big impacts, and so we've just kinda creatively tried to find other ways and avenues to partner, to try to cover those gaps until things settle and we understand what is the new landscape of resources and funding, and then how can we fit into that? Which is kinda historically what KCB has done, and you see these changes, you'll see kinda ebbs and flows as you look back, you know, over the years, and so this is probably one of the biggest ones in any recent history, but I don't know exactly, we've already seen it, we've lost almost 500,000 in funding that we've had for years past, but we've seen those gaps get covered in certain ways, and so we haven't had to lay off any staff. And I'm hoping to help have our overall numbers be a little bit higher than they were even last year. By just being more creative in how we do things.
Well, I just hope that the money continues to flow.
Yeah, well, we hope the money continues to flow. I think, I'm hoping there's gonna be some opportunities towards maybe quarter three or Q3 or Q4 of this fiscal year, once things kinda figure, I mean, even like this, right, this, Bellflowering have other couple cities that are still waiting to do the finalized vote to get funding, but the fiscal year is almost two months in, right? Everything's kinda just slowed up a little bit, and we're all just trying to figure out kinda what it's gonna look like, but.
And finally, for those who are, you're trying to help, I would say, the re-entered-to-the-labor workforce, second, you call it second chance, do you have enough workers to do work, or is there lack of work or lack of workers? What's the situation?
We can always find more workers. So the work would be the bottleneck, so we have, we can always hire more, can hire more route managers, we can get more, you know, we can always do more of that.
So there's more available out there?
Yeah, we just need more work. And so if we can get more work, we can have more workers. There's a lot of folks that just really need work, and so right now, we're having to be really selective to where we may get like eight or 10 applications for one or two positions, and we're kinda going through, and it helps us make sure that we're picking the folks that are most likely gonna benefit and sustain work once they get it, but we're still having to say, hold on or no to some people that probably would also benefit greatly from the program.
I know that our city is trying to give you, give you guys more work, but what are you doing to kind of communicate with other cities and promote this very advantageous work for them?
Yeah, we're actually using our relationship with y'all as being like, hey, guys, look at what we're doing with Bellflower, why don't you hop on board? And kinda do, so we appreciate you helping us, you know, so you had that. But yeah, we are communicating with, right now, we're not going too far outside of Bellflower, just more logistically, and there's plenty of stuff here right now that we're kinda going through. So some of the cities have like big contracts, you know, they have landscaping companies that do all of their stuff, and so one of the things that helped us was being on-call landscaping maintenance because of the decision that we made to be unincorporated, it's helped us not have to do prevailing wage, which has been beneficial for our nonprofit, you know, organization, community development. And so other cities that are potentially like that, we are reaching out to and seeing what is available.
Especially for charter cities, we don't, I mean, they don't need to pay prevailing wage in those kind of contracts anymore.
Right, when we're just doing maintenance.
So that helps.
Yes, it is.
And one more final question.
Yes.
Since this is your 25th anniversary, are you planning on having a celebration?
I hope so, I hope so. I need some party people in my staff to do it, I'm not a big.
Okay.
I will say too, one of the things.
Jason is.
Yeah. I'll say one thing that's helpful too, I'm looking across at the city council, and all of y'all hire GSI in some way or another to do some of your work, and that's a big deal. Like that, I think, trickles down to the rest of the city, to the Bellflower. Like you actually believe in us not just as city council, but as individuals, as residents of Bellflower, and that matters, and I appreciate that, but I think that kinda trickles down to the heart of the folks in our city. And so we can say like, oh, yeah, we do in so-and-so's land, and that gives us clout to be like, oh, they must be halfway decent, you know, the mayor's got us doing his properties and something like that, so that is, that's helpful as well.
Okay, good. So when there's a celebration, please let us know.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right, Victor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Andrew, great presentation. Wanna just elaborate a little bit more on some of the changes that you're doing to Good Soils. I believe you're restructuring a little bit more in your duration and that you're staffing, right? Because it used to be a cycle where every eight weeks or so.
Yeah, about three months, 300 hours, I'll divide it up, yes.
Is that something that you anticipate will help in the future of Good Soils as your, for stability purposes?
I do, I think so. I think what we found is that we were tied in, that was part of the LA Rise structure, you had a max 300 hours, so it even out to about three months that they would have. And what we'd find is, we were rushing and we were hitting the parameters and things that you had, and you would get a lot of folks through the program, and like of the 51, we had 22 that graduated, means they got a full-time job that was better than that. But the likelihood that they kept it, more than I would like is they didn't. They would get in the job for a little bit and it wouldn't work out. So we're extending it to more of a six to nine month, we're still figuring out the details to try to give us a longer time to help with any kind of bear removals and individually try to help meet some of their, the individuals' needs that they have, and create more of a community, because there's that belong on that part on the back end to where we're hoping if they're with us longer, they'll be part of the support groups and stuff, so as they're struggling, they could reach out and feel like they're part of this GSI team that they're doing.
All right, I always felt that three months was short.
It's tough.
It's tough. You're just getting, you're getting your bearings, I think it takes that much time to get, develop a habit, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then going back to the uncertainties of social services in LA County, that segment, is that related more towards, is it pathways, is it COG, is it, where's that funding gap coming from?
I don't think it's a gap, I think all the funding, the structure's changing, right? So losses being changed, everything's kinda changing, and so everyone's figuring out what is it gonna look like, and so a lot of the funding sources that we've had, even private funding sources like Kaiser or something, is like, hey, we're just waiting to see, because we're not necessarily getting all the funding that we're used to. So I feel like it's, it's not necessarily a gap now, it's just a lot of unknowns, and we're kind of lower on the totem pole, so we're just trying to wait to see until the big-brained folks get it figured out, and then we understand what the options are, what the possibilities are.
Understand, okay, very good. All right, thank you, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you, good job.
I would like to just make a comment.
Go right ahead, Mr. Morse.
Mostly for me, it's just a comment to you, Andrew, to Jason, and to Gene, you guys are great to work with, and anytime I've had a problem at my work or with anything.
Seldomly, seldomly, right?
Seldomly, 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 but you guys are quick to answer and quick to correct, and that's, that makes a difference, and that lifts up your employees too, because it's not a, it's, mistakes happen sometimes, a rock does kick up and hit a window, but you guys fix it, and you guys, and it just, I've appreciated it over the years, the many years. And my other part I wanted, so where Good Soil is concerned, it's a great relationship. My second comment was, you're not only, I just want the community to know, they're not only just helping the homeless, that is a big part of it, but I work in senior living, and I've had senior tenants, I've been able to refer to your community center, and you guys have helped them with some rental assistance. There's been other bill assistance, bill payment assistance, stuff that wasn't available at that time, and it was not only appreciated at the time for my tenants, but it was a great, a great collaboration together, and I really appreciated that at the time. It was good to be able to say to a senior, hey, there is a community center that you can go to, and it could be little, but it was, it was good. And so I just wanna thank you guys for that.
Good, thank you.
That was all, Mayor.
Ken?
Yes, I'm grateful that Andrew's got a degree in engineering, and you can see the work that he's done here. I mean, this is fantastic that he's undertaken this responsibility of working with Gene and with Jason, but we're so fortunate to have you as a leader to be able to go through all the processes here. Great presentation, I think it, you need to do this at least once a quarter, keep us on track.
Sure.
Because it's all good stuff, and you're such an important and viable part, and if we can lead by example to say, hey, Bellflower's doing this, if Paramount or Lakewood or Downey, wherever you are as well, I mean, we'll stand with you, because you've never let us down, and you continue to be a more important part. Lynn appreciates the on-call gardening or landscape, I mean, that's really something. And, uh, so, we'll build on that and the work you've done all throughout the ages, but thanks for taking the job. And thanks for being here and supporting our city, cause you really make a difference. And, uh, hopefully, people that watch us on television can have a better understanding of what Kingdom Causes is about. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let me chime in and what I like is what you do is, when you have a family that is teetering on homelessness, and we're not talking not a lot of money to, to fix a problem, when you're not homeless yet, it's a lot easier to try to have a family or somebody recover. It's when you are homeless and then you're getting a chronic homeless, and it is a struggle to get those people off the street again. And one of the programs that Kingdom Causes has is the fact is go after individuals, two families that are just having a problem paying the bills and, and you, they get a leg up and you get them stabilized. And they continue, and then that, that family never went homeless and, uh, didn't lose their home. And it's, it's always, that's money getting put to good use because it stops a, a spiral effect to the homeless streets. Um, and that's where you, you see the money and, and the donations that they, they, they work on and, uh, their infrastructure that, that gets more bang for their buck to help families and more people. And, uh, that is great that you do that, you know? Along with that, then you, you always, you know, you help the homeless people that, uh, need to get off the streets that want help.
Yeah.
And then we know there's, there's some that don't want help and that's another story for they. But you help what you can with what money you have, there's never enough money.
Right.
Great job, Andrew.
Yeah, I just wanna, I mean, if I may, just wanna say again, I mean, 25 years, but this legacy, a lot of this, we've been in Bellflower the whole time. I've only been here a little over two years, so I really feel like I'm riding on the coattails of a long line of legacy that y'all have been a part of even more. And I have a lot of people in this room have supported and been a part of KCB. I mean, one of the amazing stories, we've got Jason to help get GSI started 13 years ago. Jean was one of his participants that now came up into, he's now the director of this. And so, you have, it's like, now Jason's helped me with the housing programs and the relationships that he has and his wife with all those things helps keep going. And so, it's just a lot of relationship building and y'all are a big part of that. A lot of you in this room are a part of that. And so, I believe we're better together and if we keep working together, we can keep doing good stuff. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, great presentation. Okay, item 10 is public comments. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor and state your name for the record. And if you wish to address the city council on an item, on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
All right, audience, this is the time that anybody can come up and talk about something that's not on the agenda. Come up and yell at us, come up and thank us, whatever your flavor is.
She's gonna be real nice. Baby.
Honorable Mayor and city council members.
Good evening.
Priscilla Brown. You know who I am. Um, I know the last couple of meetings, um, people have gotten up and spoken about the loud parties and, um, um, things that are going on. So, I may be late to the game here, but I just wanna let you know that I'm having the same problem. Um, the last incident we had, had a real problem with the sheriff's department responding. So, we started, we've started calling earlier because we know this is a low priority call. Um, and we know it's gonna take them two, three, sometime four hours to get out there. That's what our experience has been. Um, but anyway, so we start calling early, so, and I forgot my timelines, so I'm gonna have to do stuff in memory. But I think we, um, started calling about 9:45. The party had been going on since about 4:30, 5 o'clock. And, um, they have a tendency to start off good, and then, once the guy gets alcohol in him, he turns into kind of an idiot. So, um, but anyway, we started calling about 9:45. I think they first responded pretty early, about 11:15. But I seen them go by. They didn't, they slowed down, they didn't stop, they didn't get out of the car, they went by, they went, "Rrrr," there were sirens, and they left. So, called up, I didn't know Matt had called also, but he had called, talked to, um, so I waited because I'd also requested a call. They said, "Do you wanna be called?" I said, "Yeah, give me a call." Cause then I know they responded. Nobody called. So, I waited about half hour, 45 minutes, called the watch commander, said, "Hey, this is what happened." "Oh, okay." And I said, "And by the way, they didn't contact me." He goes, "Okay, I'll have them call you." Nobody calls. I waited probably another hour. Um, in the meantime, Matt had also called and talked to the watch commander. I, they had a long conversation about something, I don't know what. But anyway, um, in the meantime, he, he doesn't know, but while he's on the, on the phone with the watch commander, uh, well, the watch commander said the guy, the first sheriff we called, or the first person who responded would call me back. They never called me back. So, when Matt was talking to him, they rolled by again, they did the same thing, they rolled by, they didn't stop, they didn't get out of their cars, they rolled by, this time they flashed their lights. I don't know if they're doing this to let the party cars know they're there, or if they're letting us know, "Hey, we're responding," but they're not responding. So, anyway, so, um, in the meantime, so I'm waiting still for them to call me back, called back down to the station. This is like maybe 1 o'clock in the morning or something. Um, and then the guy tells me, um, so I got another watch commander, because the first watch commander had left. He hasn't called me back, the person who responded hasn't called me back. So, the second watch commander said, "Let me contact the, the first person who responded, see why he didn't call you back." He calls me back and says, "Well, they're gone." So, nobody calls me back. So, this guy said, oh, and my time's running out. But anyway, um, so basically what happened is, um, they asked me, they said, "Hey, do you want us to come back out?" I said, "Yeah, you've come back out twice and you've done nothing." So, either I can go next door, not really wanting to send my husband, cause the guy over there gets drunk and he gets mouthy and, um, but anyway, so, I go, either I can go over there, knock on the door, and I'll knock on the door till I wake the whole house up if I need to, because this has gone on till 4:15 in the morning sometime. And 2:15, 2:30 is their normal. But anyway, so quickly, um, so, I say, "Either you can come out, or I'm gonna go knock on the door and you're gonna get a worse call than a noise complaint. You choose." Said, "I'll send somebody out." 2:15, they come out, they knock on the door, they contact somebody. In the meantime, my neighbor's gone and everybody's gone. My neighbor's gone and passed out, music's still going. This happened before. So, and we explained this when we called. But anyway, so they come out, this guy gets out of his car, knocks on the windows, knocks on the door, finally get somebody out there to turn off the music. But now, we've had three cars respond the first time, two cars respond the first, second time, one car respond the third time. So, we had six cars that we've wasted their time when the first people could have solved it and been done with it. So, I know we're shorthanded, I know noise complaints aren't a priority call, I get it, I get that. And that's why we call early, we tell them, "We're calling early because we know this is low priority, you're not gonna get hurt, so that's fine." But when they come out, and this is, we, we experience this all the time, they roll by and they don't do anything. And then I'm getting mad.
Yeah, we get that. So, is this just the, your analogy here is just one occurrence? This is just one party night? Cause you said it happens multiple times.
Oh, yeah.
This, what you're dictating tonight is just one time?
No.
And you expect?
It's several times where I, we see them roll by.
Okay. Well, okay, but.
Maybe nonstop.
What, what you're talking about is the last time, mainly, the last time they had?
The last time is this?
Six cars, okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
One time, six cars, okay.
Yeah.
Have you called the next day? What I'm gonna recommend, I don't think you had, is call, if you call the next day to public safety, and they can actually cite that house. We have a municipal code that, that might get their attention next time.
Okay, I, I have heard that.
Yeah.
So, I.
But we gotta, but we didn't know about it because the sheriff's not gonna tell us we've been banging on, you know, trying to get a party to quieten.
Does it have to be so many, after so many calls?
Yeah, I don't let, talk to, no, it doesn't, it's the first time.
Oh, the first time.
Once the, once the police show up and it continues, and it's proof, obviously, we have proof, we may be, talk to Brian McNury, you know him, he's in the audience, he'll, he'll follow you, um, meet up with you, but he, he may be able to, was it last weekend?
Um, this was, um, three weekends ago, I think.
It's kinda stretching the citation, but he'll be able to do that.
I wish I, yeah, I know, I wish I'd come to the last meeting, cause when I heard them.
Citation gets your attention.
So, okay, I didn't know I could do that. I thought they had to have so many calls and they had to.
But they have, yeah, it has to be, yeah.
So, okay.
But you have enough evidence there with the sheriff to maybe pull another citation out.
Well, yeah, talking to two watch commanders.
It's his job, he'll, he'll know the rules.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Maybe a little salvation there, but as you, as you've been watching, uh, the council meetings the last couple of times, yeah, we've had your exact scenario.
Yeah, and I didn't know.
Same response, even on, even on my street, same thing. Nothing happens.
Yeah, yeah. And that's fine if they just come over and, the last time they knocked on the window and told them to shut it off, they had a party after that, and it was fine.
Oh, yeah.
So, I think that one time of contacting.
So, guess what? On my street, when, when the sheriff doesn't come, or nothing happens?
Right.
Then my phone blows up.
Right.
Then I call, nothing happens.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
It's, it's, I don't get it, but.
Good evening, city council, members of the community. I'm Larry WH. I just wanna make sure everybody's aware that the car show is sold out.
Yeah.
It was sold out about three and a half weeks ago.
Nice.
I've got a waiting list of about eight people.
Yeah. When was the last time it sold out? Wasn't sold out last?
Last year, it sold out about three weeks before.
Oh, did it, okay.
But then some people showed up late and didn't get in, so that happens.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, and next year, October 3rd, I've already got 76 spots sold.
Wow.
So, we're doing very, very well, and I just wanna invite the community to make sure you show up on October the 4th, 2 to 6 on Bellflower Boulevard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Anybody else in the audience that wanna say a piece? You're the closer, Robin.
In more ways than one.
What'd you say? What'd you say?
You're the closer.
First of all.
For tonight and for all of life.
Mr. Mayor, city council, members of the staff and to our community, my name is Robin Snow and I'm the owner of Snow Funeral Services relocating to 9706 Somerset, Street 5 in Bellflower, uh, this week. Anyway, I would just like everybody to really remember to focus on what we do have, not what we don't have. If you want to help the community, join a service club or an organization to enrich the community and possibly yourself. Some of the organizations that you can help out is the American Red Cross, Cross. There are usually a few blood donations or blood drives in this community, and one of the things that you can do is donate blood, and when you do, you save lives. Another one is the Bellflower Art Association, the Bellflower Civic Chorus, and the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce is recruiting and always needing new ambassadors. So, if you have any questions, they're here. Um, another one is the Bellflower Concert Association, the Bellflower Family Lions Club, the Bellflower Heritage Associate, Society, uh, the Bellflower Knights of Columbus, Lakewood Oddfellows, the Bellflower Symphony Orchestra Association, the Bellflower Wiseman Club, which is an association with the YMCA, Bellflower Youth Football League, Carrying Connection Community Services, Boy Scouts of America, Troop 303, Delvers Gym and Mineral Society, the Elks Lodge of Bellflower, the Friends of the Library, Greater Bellflower Little League, Kiwanis Club of Bellflower. Yay?
No.
Always consider joining the PTA because the schools can always use you as an asset, and it's important for our children. The Rotary Club of Bellflower, the Salvation Army Bellflower Corps, the Senior Citizens Club at Thompson Park, the Seroptimist Club of Bellflower, and the Women's Club of Bellflower. All of these clubs can be found bellflower.ca.gov in the community and clubs and organizations. Please take advantage of the things that our city does have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Robin?
Robin.
What's the address again, of your new office?
Pardon me?
What's, what's the address?
My?
Yeah, your new office.
9207? 9706.
907?
9706.
Okay.
Somerset.
All right, very good, thank you.
Suite 5.
Suite 5, right, okay.
Bellflower.
Man.
90706.
Hey, Robin, hey, Robin.
May I give you an offer? You join the Kiwanis Club, I'll pay your initiation fee.
For a year?
No, for the initiation. Well, you're, you just asked for a $1,000 gift. Yeah. I'll do, I'll do, uh, three months.
You'll do what?
Three months.
Oh, okay.
Well, you, that's still 300 bucks.
I, but see, I, I promoted.
Yes, you did.
Hey, Robin, the Bellflower Elks Club is gone.
The what?
The Bellflower Elks Club is, is moved out of Bellflower.
They went to Lakewood.
Oh, they're not here anymore?
No, they, they went to Lakewood.
Okay, update, bellflower.ca.gov. Cause this is where I pulled this list from.
And there's not, and there's no more Wiseman's Club.
I, I was gonna do churches, but I would've been here for about an hour.
Jack Willing.
Exactly.
Hi.
How are we all doing tonight?
Good.
Good deal. Got a couple of questions. We have a...
Icon, and then you gotta sign in, Mr. Brown, too, yeah?
Sure enough, I'll get that done. We have a furniture store that sits on Clark, and I believe it's Olive. It's just north of my street. They leave their, for lack of a better word, their poop all over the damn sidewalk, day after day after day, and it seems as though they haul it back from wherever they deliver something and leave it on the sidewalk, time after time. Now, I know the city has had problems with the multi-unit buildings here when tenants move out, and they just throw all their garbage on the sidewalk and expect somebody else to take care of it, and usually it's the city having to go by and pick it up, which infuriates me as well. But this is a business, and whomever owns this business should be minding their own trash and not leaving it out for everybody else to get a nice view of it. I don't know, you know, what the city can or cannot do about this, but I don't know if it's Mr. Bryan's responsibility or, you know, I'll leave it on your doorstep to see if we can get this, you know, gentleman taken care of. That was about all.
All right, thank you.
Was it Olive and Clark?
Clark.
Yeah, it's just a street just north of me off of Oak.
It wouldn't be the main street one, would it?
Main?
That's what I thought. That's the one I see.
Clark and Main.
Clark and Main.
Good evening, Mayor Denton and City Council members. I just want to say thank you again for the Summer Street Fest. I had so much fun. I talked, I take the line dancing class at Sims Park, and it's so much fun, and I talked about it so much that several of my class members would come and dance and everything, and they just loved it, too. So I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you. It was make summer summer for me.
That's sweet, thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone, we'll move on. Okay. Brian, Mr. Smoot, you want to introduce 13A into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 13A is consideration of possible action to provide direction regarding the future of the New Hope Temporary Shelter. And I believe we have Timothy and Larry here from Mercy House assisting this. So between them and Wong Su, we're gonna make a little presentation for you guys this evening, and then we're open to any discussion and direction you'd like to give us.
Mr. Mayor, I have got a conflict on this. I have a property near the shelter, so I'll be recusing myself from this item.
Okay, let the record reflect that Councilmember Coop's gonna recuse himself from this item. He will leave the room.
Don't forget me.
You guys ready to go? Take her away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. The item before you tonight is regarding the future of New Hope. I don't mean to repeat too much of whatever is already on your staff report. However, just for the benefit of the public, I would like to provide a very brief background as to why we have a shelter here in the first place. As you recall, the city conducted a community survey about seven years ago, which indicated that approximately four out of five out of our residents thought of homelessness to be a serious challenge here within our jurisdiction. In fact, at the time, homelessness was overwhelmingly the number-one identified problem in Bellflower by our residents. So the city took a series of actions to respond to our residents' needs and growing concerns, one of which was to enter into a voluntary settlement agreement with a homeless advocacy group. As a part of that settlement agreement, Judge Carter, who was overseeing the case at the time, ordered the city of Bellflower to build a 50-bed shelter in order, essentially in exchange for the city's ability to enforce our anti-nuance ordinances. Judge Carter's ruling at the time was aligned with the findings or the decisions from Martin versus City of Boise, which ruled that municipalities could not enforce their anti-nuance laws without providing people experiencing homelessness alternative beds or shelters. So in the spring of 2020, the city of Bellflower built and began operations of New Hope, and we've been in partnership with Mercy House ever since. So over the past five years, the city of Bellflower has partnered with Mercy House. Mercy House has provided onsite services primarily focused around housing, and they've also provided services around health, mental health, employment, job training, et cetera. In the last fiscal year, Mercy House has seen 96 total exits, of which 44 of them were considered successful or positive exits, meaning they were able to find the next level of housing placement. We did see 20 negative exits as well, but I believe that's just the nature of the beast, meaning they either went back into the streets, or they are now in jail and/or prison. And there were also 32 unknown. That just probably means one day they woke up and they no longer want to be there, and they either went northeast, south, or west, or possibly meet the Lord once they left the shelter.
If I could take a moment to highlight some of the information on that slide. 132 unduplicated folks were served a New Hope in the last fiscal year. And those, that's 132 individuals who came off the streets in the city of Bellflower. All of the referrals that go into the shelter come through public safety, and they all have a strong tie to the city. So those are folks who are, were no longer on your park benches, no longer, you know, in the streets, but they came inside into the shelter to receive the services. I also want to highlight 46% is shockingly good. The, for comparison, right, successful housing placements out of interim shelter in Lhasa, according to their dashboard, it's between 5 and 9% in a good year. So 46% means there's something that's happening in this shelter that sets it apart performance-wise from other shelters.
And so the city's efforts in partnership with Mercy House to push, essentially get the residents off the streets, on their feet, and into housing, we see really an exponential growth and the success of the services provided at New Hope. I mean, to put truthfully, I mean, it looks like Mercy House, you know, struggled a little bit to get the housing placement for the participants in the program. However, we do see that Mercy House, it seems, as though they've turned a corner. And as Timothy has mentioned earlier, when you compare it to the Lhasa data, I mean, these numbers are in a percentage-wise, is much higher than what they're seeing at Lhasa.
I think this slide really tells a story of how the New Hope shelter has performed. You may remember three years ago, me sitting in the same seat with the 13 housing placements in a year, asking hard questions about what's going on? Why aren't we able to make, you know, connect the dots between the folks who are housed in our shelter here in Bellflower and the opportunities to get them housed? I'll say, you know, we've worked really hard to connect those dots. A little over a year ago, your city manager called a meeting between us and city staff and county staff and Lhasa staff. And we asked those hard questions, hey, you guys have resources? We have people who need those resources. What's stopping us from picking those dots? And that jump from 21 to 44, I think that's the direct result of those meetings, right? That's the direct result of us connecting the dots to the services that are available. Take the next slide. I think the data here on this slide breaks it out even further. What this is, is it's the types of housing placements per year. And so we have permanent housing, or permanent supportive housing, that's PSH. The red ones are rapid rehousing or time-limited subsidy, vouchers, other, and no subsidy. And you can see those first three years, we're not doing nothing. We're working hard to get those folks matched, connected to housing. I want to especially highlight the no-subsidy clients, right? In '22, we had seven. In '23, we had four. Those are clients who didn't receive a public benefit to get housed, right? Those are folks who, they met with us, we connected to employment, we increased their income, and they didn't get a voucher, they didn't get rapid rehousing. They found a unit, and they bought a market, they got a market made unit. That's really hard work. But you see the biggest impact, and it's shocking, it's striking visibly. You see the big red line in '24, '25. Those are the rapid rehousing resources that we were able to connect, right? We were able to make that connection to the resources available in Spa 7, and we opened up the pipeline to get folks moved out of the shelter and into housing.
And so, oh, did you go ahead?
So one of the, one of the challenging metrics for us through the years has been length of stay, right? The reasonable critique of a homeless shelter is that, are you just housing, are you just warehousing these folks, or are you pushing them towards housing, right? And the one way to measure that is to consider length of stay. And I'll be honest, there have been some long lengths of stay, right? Those long lengths of stay are not representative of the overall shelter. And I think this chart really demonstrates that. This is the pie chart for all of the length of stays at the shelter to date. And you can see only 8% or a little over 8% stay in the shelter more than a year, right? That's not typical for clients to stay in the shelter more than a year. 83% of them spend less than six months in the shelter. If you turn the slide, this slide is the length of stays for clients who exit to housing. So the other slide, it has data about clients who come in and leave quickly, right? And so the length of stay is a little lower if you count all the folks who spend five days.
Do you have a stat on how many are, come to the shelter and then they leave on their own?
Yes.
Because you're saying they're leaving, they're coming out, well, they could be saying, I don't like this place, I leave. There's gotta be a bunch of those.
Yeah, so if you go back one, that would probably be the ones who are staying one to seven days, right? The one to seven, or maybe eight to 30, less than 30 days. Those are the folks who come in and they don't acclimate to the shelter, or for one reason or another, they come up and leave.
Thank you.
The point of this slide is, these are the people who are successfully housed, right? The folks who come in and they follow the shelter expectations, they get connected to a resource, or they get employment, and they get benefits, and they find their own way out, right? 61% of them are in there less than a year. 45% of them are less than six months, right? So there is, there is a very successful flow of folks through the shelter. Right now in the shelter, there are three people who've been there more than 180 days. And that's today.
What was your average capacity, you know, and the capacity is 50, but what was your average yearly people?
So right now, occupancy is around the 30s, about 33, 34.
So out of last year, there was probably the average of 34 people amongst the 50 beds, okay.
Previously, for an extended period of time, we were somewhere between 48 and 50 people on a regular basis. And then partially by some of the connections, I would say, in Mercy House's efforts and also KCB, that number has consistently dropped down, and we've remained somewhere between 30 and 40, I would say is probably a realistic number. I think today, as of this morning, it was 37, so.
Do we know if the, is there less people that want to go to the shelter? Is there less customers? There's less people on the streets? Do we know the reason?
I think we're seeing two things. Number one, you're seeing more exits from the shelter. But based on those numbers that Timothy showed and Wong Su showed previously, you're also seeing more people going in, which is why that length of stay is shortening. So yes, people are coming off of the streets and going in there, but we do have the extra capacity there now, that we didn't have previously. So that's probably helping the input a little bit. I would argue, anecdotally at least, that the challenge still remains finding that placement out of the shelter into whatever that next step is. That is still certainly the challenge.
But we went the whole, if I get it wrong, you think you said 34 probably was the average for all year of last year?
Probably 34, 35, yeah.
Okay, 35, well, there's 15. We went, we had a shelter that we couldn't fill 15 beds all year last year.
Yeah, we had 15, on average, of 15 beds available at any given night, sure.
And then we pay, we pay for 50 beds.
Yeah, we do. We pay for a 50-bed shelter, certainly.
Thank you.
And so when we look at the homeless services that we look overall, provided by the city in partnership with Mercy House, we do see the effects, you know, trickling in. I mean, since this is the data from CityNet from 2019 to 2003, we see a significant drop in the unsheltered count of people experiencing homelessness in our community, and so as Mr. Smoot was saying, is they're either going into our shelter or Mercy House is finding some level of success on pushing them into the next level of housing. And because we didn't have the full picture from '24 to '25, we've also pulled the data from Lhasa. And so the data we see is that shelter numbers of individuals experiencing homelessness has actually gone up, and so we are successfully able to bring people into the shelter. And according to Lhasa's data, just a caveat there, I'm not sure if Lhasa's number is biblical truth, but we do see a downtrend on that as well. So holistically, just looking at the efficiency and efficacy of Mercy House, there seems to be a trend on Mercy House having turned that corner. So in addition to all of that, it's really not a secret that the cost of goods and services across the board and everything is going up. That's also the case with operating the New Hope shelter. The city of Bellflower, you know, we're super grateful to have received external sources of funding from the county and the state. And while we fully acknowledge that those external sources of funding have been essential in the continued operations of our shelter, they have not been fully sufficient to meet the operational or ongoing operational needs of the city. And so there is a, somewhat of a strain on the general funds as we go on. And so even at the best-case scenario, the city is still expected to spend millions of dollars over the next couple of years to operate the shelter. Bringing that all together, recently, the Supreme Court's decision in the city of Grants Pass versus Johnson abrogated the rulings in Martin versus Boise, essentially, or effectively meaning the city no longer needs to have a shelter in the city to enforce our anti-nuance ordinances, one of the reasons we have the shelter in the first place. And the city has still continuing to provide services at New Hope with partnership with Mercy House. But if we continue to do so, there's also the, there's a possibility that we will continue to see that hit on our general fund. And on top of all of that, there may have been some questions regarding the efficiency and efficacy of our services at New Hope. And with all the data that we provided to the council this evening, hopefully, we can receive some guidance from you all tonight. And one more thing to add, Mercy House's contract, New Hope's operators, their contract is ending with us within the month. And so holistically, looking at that, we can hope that you guys, or the council can consider that tonight.
And I want to add one thing to this. In the context of what Brian and Andrew were discussing previously, and I think, too, where some of what you were asking, Mr. Mayor, is we've asked ourselves, is there an input problem into the shelter? Is there an output problem out of the shelter? And where is the bottleneck, if you will, and where is the challenge? Because we understand, even though we've seen some of these successes, we still see homelessness on our streets. And so are we seeing, are we solving the problem that we know we all want to solve in getting people off of our streets? That's the conversation we've been having, at least from the input perspective of, A, can we continue to enforce our anti-nuance ordinances in our city, hence the beast team that you all have created with this year's budget? But the piece missing out of that was the outreach piece. And knowing we had 15 beds on any given night available in the shelter, how do we get folks off of the street and into those available beds? Or if we've reached those 50 beds and there's some other option available for them, how do we get them off of the street and into that option, thereby not having to enforce? The piece that's missing out of that beast team was some of that outreach side of it. Before we go out and do an enforcement, how do we reach those people and offer those services? That's what we've been discussing with Kingdom Causes. Because part of what you guys have asked us to do with this and beyond, and everything that we're doing, is partner with some of our local organizations to solve the problems that we have before us. This is a perfect example of that. We have Mercy House, we have our shelter, we have those beds available, those 15 beds we know that aren't full, how do we get people into those? We have a community partner who does that exact service for us. We can do the enforcement, they can do the outreach, we can partner together to make that happen. So that's part of the conversation we have with Andrew and his team, is how do we fill that gap within our services as well?
And with that, staff's recommendation to the city council this evening is to provide direction to the city manager regarding the future of New Hope Temporary Shelter, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. We do have Timothy Nguyen here, Chief Program Officer with Mercy House, and we have Mr. Larry Haynes, CEO of Mercy House, to answer any technical questions you may have as well. Thank you.
All right. Good report, was it good? Anyone want to go first? Or any questions? Any questions?
I have a question. I asked this last year, and I believe...
I believe it's higher than 11. I'd have to confirm.
I want to say 15 off the top of my head, but let me double-check before I give you.
Okay, while they're looking for that.
And my other question is, on one of the slides back, for unsheltered, it was 94, according to Lhasa's records. Considered unsheltered, is that just the people that are just on the streets?
That's correct.
Not in a vehicle, not in a vehicle?
They would be considered unsheltered in a vehicle.
And I want to give a caveat there, too. Lhasa's numbers, the way they do their counts is somewhat in the ether, I suppose. It's their own counting methods, but it's not necessarily translatable down to the city level. They count on a spa level. They do counts within our cities. But the data that they provide is more of an aggregate data, and then they sort of boil that down to a city level. So I wouldn't take that as solid data. Sometimes I question how they even get to the numbers they get to, but at least it shows a trend.
Yeah.
The number is 15. 15 women, yeah.
That was my question.
Mr. Mayor, I'm ready.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Sanchez.
Timothy, thank you.
My mind was spinning.
Mr. Lee, thank you for the presentation. First of all, I want to start off by acknowledging the success that has taken place. It clearly shows and indicates from the reports that we've been receiving as of the last, you know, year or so, the change that's happened. And you attribute that to, I think I want to take a step back. I think when Mercy House first got here, and please clarify if I'm mistaken, this was the first site that you were operating within LA County?
That's correct.
Correct? I say that because it is clear and obvious that in LA County, the rules are different, the game of play is different, right? You've got to learn that. So that clearly has to have played a role in the slowness of the first few years. But obviously, we've, you know, you've seemed to have turned a corner. Can, you know, and I think it says a lot to the continued investment. With that said, can you, just for refresher, elaborate on the community ties that most of the individuals may have who live or who are currently placed and living in our shelter?
So in order to be eligible to stay in the Bellflower shelter, the shelter guys have to have an established tie to the city. And so an established tie means either they have a prior address here, they work here, or they go to school here. Those are probably the three that come to mind. I think there may be a caveat for known to local law enforcement. So if you're, if you're, the patrol officers know somebody, they could, you know, establish them as a tie here. But that's a more special circumstance than, most typically, it's, oh, I live, my last address was Bellflower, or I worked in Bellflower.
Very good. And my next question on that note is, what, what do you see as one of the main reasons for the short-term exits? And is there any room for improvement there on the operations side of the shelter? Or, or from even from the, you know, how individuals are being referred into the shelter? What improvement do you have ideas for us on that note?
That's a really good question. I think the, the biggest reason, I think, that folks come into the shelter and then, then leave quickly, right? The reason that a shelter referral wouldn't stick in the shelter is that they may have had a different, different idea of the expectations of the shelter, that the conversations weren't had with them on the outside about the rules that we're going to have, or the concrete setting that they're going to be entering. I think one of the biggest ways to address that is by having that thoughtful outreach partner. I know when we first started here, Kingdom Causes and CityNet were partners with the local law enforcement, doing that outreach work. And, you know, through that time, we had, you know, the shelter was full. I think that if we want to reduce the number of folks who come into the shelter and are surprised, it's about engaging with them when they're on the streets and setting their expectations so that they understand what our expectations will be when they come into the shelter. You know, the, and so that when they go into a room and it's a concrete setting, and there's, you know, 20 other men in a dormitory setting, that's not a surprise. It's been well explained to them, and they'll know the rhythms and the patterns.
I know you guys are providing case management, but what other services other than, what services are you providing in that case management? Could you elaborate for us? I didn't see that in your presentation.
Yeah, absolutely. If, once again, could you go back to the first slide? It's maybe hidden there, kind of sneak, there, sorry, second slide. That's the one. Yeah, you see there, we sort of tallied 1,500 unique services that got rendered through the year. The top three types of services we have are housing, healthcare and mental health, and employment and income. Right? So we do have some partners that we rely on to do services, or they're coming into service, for example. We partner with, what are they called? Neighborhood Health, oh my gosh, what is it? Central, Central Neighbors Health, CHNF is the acronym now. They bring their mobile clinic out, and they provide full-service primary care to the guests in the shelter. We've got 1736 SSVF that comes and provides veteran services to our veterans who are in the shelter, right? If folks need some discharge paperwork, or if they can maybe revisit their discharge status, that can be really impactful and really connect them to housing services. We recently have really deepened our relationship with LA Care. LA Care has ability to connect our clients more directly to resources from the county than we can, right? And so by referring clients over to housing services through LA Care, you know, especially our more vulnerable clients can get their disability paperwork and maybe get referred directly to, to receive housing vouchers. That opens up the pipeline for, for those shelter guests to get into housing.
And that, that LA Care is a direct result of our work connecting with the COG as well. That's through Hector at the COG and his connections through the COG and elsewhere with LA Care. He bridged that gap for us and for Mercy House as well, so credit goes to him and his team for that as well.
To Hector?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
That's been very powerful.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Smooth. Timothy, thank you for that. Quick question, what, are you operating any other facilities now in LA County?
We have a permanent supportive housing project in LA. It's called, I want to say Lake House. It is up, I think it's in, I don't want to misname the neighborhood that it's in, but it's in, it's in the LA city.
Do you foresee at any point in time seeking a vendor status to be able to receive direct funding to operate a shelter of this type in, in anywhere in the county at any point in time?
Yeah, we're actually looking at that application process, along with the application process through DHS for ICMS.
Very good to know. All right, very good. I'm good for now, Mr. Mayor. I have some other questions, but I'll reserve them till later.
Gotcha.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Can you show the first, oh, this, this slide. Timothy, thank you so much for your presentation. I think it's the best report you've ever given us.
Thank you.
City Council, so, good to see you.
Thank you.
It seems like we're making headways in terms of addressing the, the issue of unsheltered population. So I just have a couple of questions in terms of the numbers. In your report that I pulled out from Public Safety, it says here that the average length of stay for successful housing placement is currently 496 days. How do you, how do you reconcile this with this? Can you explain to us?
I absolutely can't.
This number, and this one is a huge number.
There, there is a very large number, and it is because...
I'm shocked. But when you say 190, tell us, what's the difference?
The difference is actually a handful of clients that we'll call long stayers. There was actually a client that we got housed in December of 2024, so relatively recently now, who entered the shelter on the first day we opened, on May 20th of 2020. And that was a shelter guest who sort of fell between the cracks in terms of his vulnerability, right? He wasn't highly vulnerable so that he would qualify for PSH, but he had trouble, you know, getting his driver's license, getting, you know, getting employment, and finally getting up in sort of a failure to launch kind of situation. We worked with him, we were persistent with him, and it took us a long time, right? From 2020 through December 2024, right? Almost, you know, more than three years. But he, he got a job. He got a job as a lift driver, and then, you know, saved up his money and moved into an apartment on his own, right? Without a rental subsidy. And that's, that's a success story because that's, you know, while we were struggling to get access to the TLS, while, before we made those connections through the COG, we had a client who was, behaved in the shelter. He followed the expectations, he wasn't, you know, he wasn't doing all the things that you worry for a shelter guest to do. He was just having a hard time getting work. But then he got work, and he saved up money, and he bought a vehicle so that he could do his own, so he could be a lift driver. And, you know, now he's a lift driver, and he's actually our, one of our case managers recently connected to him because we housed somebody in the same apartment complex that he's in. And we asked, hey, is this guy there still? He's like, yeah, he's still there, he's still driving, he's got an electronic, he's got an electric vehicle now, so he's, you know, saving money, you know, on fuel and making more money as a driver. So that's, that's the reason that average length of stay is so high. Average length of stay for housing placement is so high. So we had those extreme cases. I will say, over the last year, we've made a really concerted effort towards those long stayers, right? The folks who have been in the shelter for more than 180 days. And it's been really deliberate. And, and to that end, there's only three people who are in the shelter today over 180 days. So as time progresses, we're going to see that metric, the length of stay for housing placements, that's going to continue to go down because there's not that many people left who have the long length of stay.
So basically, it really messed up the, the average based on that one individual. So hopefully, we'll not see that again in the future. Okay, so follow-up question, also in the number of, the number of individuals staying more than 265 days. Is that also a factor? Because in the report that you have, it says 26. How many do you have staying more than 265 days?
So today, there's only three people in the shelter over 180.
When you say today, as of starting from July 1st?
Their total length of stay in the shelter from the day they entered, and through, this was actually July data, but there wasn't anyone on the cusp of 180. So, but...
So because of those individuals also?
Yes.
Because they kind of tilted the, the average?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good. So we're on the right track here. In terms of engagement, it's an overall question, how do we engage our unhoused population? What is the process to engage them?
From the city's end, our primary engagement method is through, through Southwest Patrol, who does a lot of our outreach and efforts. I'm getting echo. Trupepi's folks in the back, I'm getting echo if you're hearing that. Our primary form of engagement is through Southwest Patrol, who's out on the streets. So they're doing a lot of our initial engagement with the folks, sometimes through our staff. I think Timothy could probably talk about who their primary referrals come from, sometimes through our public safety department, if people come into our, into the substation directly. They might come through that area, through the sheriff's department as well. Obviously, Tim, can you talk about some of the direct ones?
So what I'm getting at is, in terms of our contacts, let's say Southwest Patrol, if they make contact with the unhoused person, do we have some kind of data in terms of how many actually go to the shelter, how many move on to other cities, or just stay in the area?
It's a good question. I mean, I've, I could tell you anecdotally from the interactions with Southwest and their reports that they provide to us, I would say the number of times they contact individuals versus the number of those individuals that go into shelter, the second number would be very small. A very small percentage will take that shelter. It would take a, a large number of contacts in order to get the one that will go into the shelter. Does that make sense? Because a lot of times what we're seeing is they're contacting the same individuals on a regular basis, to the point of a lot of them, we know them by name, because we're contacting the same individuals at this corner, and then, you know, later in the day contacting them at another corner. It's those same individuals, but we do have some that will take that service.
Okay. So I'm just trying to be very optimistic about this. Seems like we're making significant progress from more than 50 back then, back in 2020. Now it's about 30, 35. So I'm expecting that the number of the census in the shelter will go down continually going forward. So can you go back to the, second to the last slide in terms of, there you go. A question to the city attorney, because I'm mindful of the, the cost to run the shelter. If we were to scale down the capacity to, let's say, just throw a number between 30 and 35, for example, so that means that we will not be in compliance with the consent decree. Do we need to do something right now to basically say, we will not comply anymore with the consent decree, without abandoning the shelter?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would disagree that we, with its statement that we would not be in compliance with the consent decree. The settlement specifically states that we have to comply with the terms of the consent decree as long as the laws don't change. The law's changed.
Okay.
Which means that we don't have to comply because there's nothing for us to comply with from a legal standpoint. There's a practical answer to your question, which is, yes, of course, we're going to inform the court that based upon the decision by the United States Supreme Court, we no longer believe that we are tied to the consent decree, and accordingly, we're going to do something else other than was prescribed by that settlement agreement. But that's a practical answer to your question, not a legal answer to your question. Legally, we are no longer bound by that consent decree, by the terms of the consent decree itself.
So, just to clarify, so if we were to take action, for example, reduce the number of beds, we don't need to notify the court? We don't need to take any legal action?
There are two answers to that.
Okay.
Legally, no. Practically, yes. I really try to avoid the wrath of a federal judge.
Okay. So basically, there is no timeline in terms of notifying the court?
No.
If we take action, let's say, two months from now, next month, you know what? Judge, we can reduce the number of beds. That's what it is.
Correct. As a practical matter, I'd inform the court that the city council may be taking a different direction from what was originally contemplated. Here are the reasons why we want to keep you fully informed about what's happening, and I'm sure Judge Carter would have his ideas on that particular issue, as, as if you open up the newspapers, you frequently see. But I also know that Judge Carter is a practical man, and he will understand the council's reasoning behind that. And I think as long as the council continues down the path of demonstrating its, its concern for those individuals who are less fortunate than others, that he will be sympathetic toward that particular direction and may want to have you in court explaining it to him. But other than that, again, by the terms of the consent decree, we're no longer bound by it.
Yeah, okay. All right, very good. That's it for now, Mayor?
Okay.
For now. Thank you.
My question, mainly as a staff at the moment, for the contract with Mercy House is up in 30 days?
I believe the end of September.
End of September, so, doesn't that? So what kind of timeline is it? Do they, we tell them to get a proposal? How much does it have to, you know, because it's, we're not going to have an operator on September 30th, it's, right? If we don't, we don't ask for a proposal, and then we have to have some proposals approved.
Yeah, I mean, this is, in all honesty, this is part of why we're here this evening. Because if we were going to make some significant changes to Mercy House in general, and I'm sorry, New Hope in general, say, reducing the number of beds, or closing altogether, or adjusting the services, certainly, we want to ensure that our contractor is, number one, able to provide those services, or that we're finding a contractor that's able to provide those services. And then, if we're making those changes, we're communicating appropriately with our existing contractors to make sure they have time to transition as necessary in any of those scenarios. So we needed to be here this evening to give us some direction as to how to go through that process. If we're changing pieces of the structure and how we do what we do, we can probably work with Mercy House as to how to go about that. If the council desires for us to put out some sort of RFP to adjust those services or adjust costs in some way, we can do that. That will take us some time. We probably have to work with Mercy House for some sort of interim contract in that period, and I have no doubt that Mercy House will be putting into that process for us too, as they did previously. That's why we need some direction for me here this evening.
And there's also, I mean, I heard one thing was possibly cut beds. Well, how much can you cut where it's not profitable for a business to, because there's going to, there's, there's, there's a, being in business and the money, there's, there's a, there's no worth doing it. You're going to get, you know, we say something tonight, we don't know what that is.
Yeah, and realistically...
Oh, yeah, they're bidding on that because this is, it'll go broke.
We, we did...
Or it could cost just as much as lower beds than...
Yeah, we did have a very high-level conversation, very briefly with...
Oh, yes.
Timothy and Larry about that sort of scenario. And is that a possibility to find savings in that? And frankly, there could be a little bit of savings, but it's not like you're going to see, you know, 15 beds worth of saving, because you still have some static costs that just remain the same regardless of what you do. You would see some savings because it's less food, you know, potentially less beds, maybe less, a little less security, et cetera, but some of those static costs remain static as is, so.
And I think my colleagues know where I'm at. Five years ago, this endeavor with this homeless shelter, we made a deal with Judge Carter, and we didn't get, I'm disappointed, we never got what we thought we were going to get. With the judge's consent decree that we did, we, you know, we were told we were going to spend all this money, and, and we're going to have a homeless individual that has a connection in Bellflower? And that individual gets a choice, he can go to the, his, him and her goes to the shelter, or they leave town, or they go to jail. But due to the sheriff's policy, that was never enforced. It's, comes from the upper longsens of the department, that we could not do anything with that. And every one of us on the time at that, that made that decision, we made that decision knowing that's what could, what could happen. Every resident or every, someone that lives in this town that's in my circles complain about the homeless people, they're the ones that don't want help. They're the ones doing the crime. They're the, they're the ones that are intoxicated or under influence at the intersections. They see them every morning going to work, or night going to work, coming home, and we can't do nothing about them. There's no mental health for these individuals, and, and they don't want help, they just want to live on the streets and cause chaos. We have a shelter, that's great. The shelter does wonderful things, as we can see some of the stats here, but is 3 million, you know, over $3 million a year, is that the money we need to spend to do it? That's like $86,000, $87,000 a person a year for the 35, or for the 44 that, of last year that got help. I don't know what it is. Is it something that, since it's under 50 beds now, do we go less beds? And by mental health, you know, I even talked about possibly, you know, trying to get a prosecutor that works for the city of Bellflower to actually do some 51-50 evaluations and, and get them in a mental hospital to try to turn them around. To me, that's not trying that or spending the money to see if that even is an avenue? I don't know. But we, what we're doing now is not working because we see every day what's within our borders of our town. And it's not just our town, it's the other towns. How much resources does a sickly, under the influence, alcohol abuse type of person, when they're passed out on the sidewalk or the bus bench and the paramedics got to come, the fire department rolls? Now they're on that scene, and somebody in town doesn't get service that may need to have a medical issue because they're tied up. You know, this fire department and paramedics do a great job, you know, if somebody can come from that town. I don't know what the answer is, but I sure see a lot of emergency personnel and sheriffs at locations for people that don't want help. It's a scar on society, and in my head, in the way I'm thinking process is, what, we only have so much money to try to do something. I try to think of other, if something doesn't work, I really try to think of something else. Because even if you think of something else and try it and it doesn't work, at least you tried. And I know my colleagues know I think that way, but there's got to be a hybrid of something with this homeless shelter. We're missing something because we're not getting the people that really need help, help. There's, you know, we have a shelter that can hold 50, we only have 35. We, we, we can't fill it at the moment, and, and that may be a good thing if there's not, if the homeless counts are down, which it shows that some of it is down. There's, you know, we have a shelter that can hold 50, we only have 35. We, we, we can't fill it at the moment and, and that may be a good thing if there's not, if the homeless counts are down, which it shows that some of it is down. I don't know what the answer is, but that's my spiel for trying to come up with a hybrid of this, this shelter.
Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in on this conversation, I think it's a good conversation to be having. I'm not a homeless expert by no means, but I do believe that there are experts in this room and I'll, you know, I'll look at Andrew, Jason. I look at, which by the way, I should acknowledge, acknowledge that Mr. Ivan Solik from County Supervisor's Office, Dennis Hans here, and also Lauren Yocamisa, welcome to Bellflower. The, the one thing that I'm seeing is that when we first began this process, we had CityNet, we had Kingdom Causes providing outreach services, direct outreach services to our community, the members of our community who are homeless. But at Mercy House, there was a bottleneck. There was nowhere for the individuals to go. They weren't adequately, for lack of a better word, capable of, of helping release that bottleneck because they weren't unfamiliar with the LA County rules and they had to develop that. And I think that's a fair statement to make. I, I asked that question earlier, they agreed with that statement. And I think now, and this is no disrespect to, to our city staff who are handling the situation or our law enforcement, but let's just be honest, they will have a difficulty building trust with the individuals that are remaining on our street. Because, one, either they're wearing a badge or, two, they do not have the expertise to, to build that relationship that is necessary to get someone from the street or that corner into a shelter bed, to begin the process of ideally seeing the other successes that we have seen with other individuals. So I'm wondering here if we're seeing the opposite effect. Now we have a functioning New Hope Shelter where they're actually able to get people into the next stage of housing, but we don't really have in place the outreach programs that we once had. So we went, you know what I mean? Am I making sense here? We flipped the role, we flipped the switch here. So I'm wondering if an, more investment in the outreach by professionals, again, no offense to Brian, you know, no offense, no offense to our Southwest Patrol team, but, but they are not the experts that can go out there and get John Doe, who is, you know, down on his luck, mental health challenges and all this other stuff. They're not going to be, they're not capable of handling that situation. So I'm wondering if that is something that we need to be considering and working with Mercy House to either come up with some kind of a scalable, you know, scalable, what's the word I'm going to use here? Rates or bed count, you know, if it's under 40, it's a certain rate. If it's above 40 and between 40 and 50, you know what I mean?
A sliding scale.
A sliding scale. Thank you. Thank you. That's what I needed. I think those are all considerations, but I think at the end of the day, we have a hole still in the system that we've created. We've done a great job. We've been praised by our regional leaders and our regional partners for the work that we've been doing. And we are one of three shelters in LA County. And, and we're, we're, we've been proud of it. I know it's expensive, I get that. My understanding is it's about 1.7 out of our general budget out of the 3 million because we do receive some funding. Obviously, I know that is a burden on staff to get the funding sometimes, but I think it's well worth it. And I think our partners like Kingdom Causes and Mercy House understand the value in the work that we're doing. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're seeing both sides of this coin.
I want to point out one thing because you mentioned some of the external funding. There is one caveat to some of our funding sources that we've received. Again, we received them somewhat sporadically and from different pots of funds at the state and county level, if you will. Some of those have come along, some of the strings have been that we maintain at least 30 beds. As some of those, as a condition of the funding source. So if we were to go below that, we'd have to rethink some of those funding sources. If we were to make other adjustments, we might have to rethink some of those funding sources now or in the future. But again, those funding sources have not been consistent or guaranteed at any point. And it's been a little bit of a slog through the mud sometimes to get that funding at all, but there are conditions to it sometimes.
Thank you, Mr. Smooth, for pointing that out. And Mr. Mayor, one thing I'll add, and I mentioned earlier to Mr. Timothy, the process of getting vendored with LA County. The LA County, LA County, the, the system itself is going through an enormous change and modification with, with everything that has happened and with the new measure, Measure A. And I believe strongly, and I, and I think that our county partners would help us through this process, but there is a way moving forward in the future where Mercy House will be able to become vendorized and, and directly receive the funding through the county or some form to operate the shelter ideally. But that's something that we also should be looking into in the future. I am of the position that we have budgeted for four years, additional, four more years of this New Hope Shelter. And that's what it is. It's New Hope. It is, it, there's 30 something individuals in there that still have a tie to Bellflower, who are connected to Bellflower. And I believe if this shelter were to go away, would end up back on our streets. They're not going to go to Bell, they're not going to go to any other shelter. And so I just want to make, point that out, that I think we should support Mercy House how, how we have supported them recently in the last year of unclogging their, their, their access to greater services and help them get vendorized and help them get direct funding directly through the county to operate the shelter. I think that's a good process and I think that's one, one that needs to be explored in the near future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes.
In response to Councilmember Sanchez's comments about engagement, I think you're engaging with Kingdom Causes to do exactly that. So I think it's in the budget. I think you're working, can you explain more on that?
Um, yeah, that, actually, that may require some budget amendments depending on how we structure that, so be ready for that. But again, we're talking about a multi-pronged approach to how we address homelessness in Bellflower. One part of that is we provide shelter beds. Another part of that is exactly what the mayor mentioned of enforcement of the rules that we have and the standards that we have in Bellflower. We have addressed that, you all have addressed that through your budget process and the creation of your Beast Team. Keep in mind, that's a seven-figure investment in the enforcement piece of that. You've also established a joint powers authority with Paramount and Lakewood to increase the public safety, the ability of our three communities regionally, at least subregionally, to address public safety. Homelessness is certainly a part of that question and there are conversations about mental health and that. There's conversations about prosecution services, an example of which is one of our most recent efforts in talking to the DA's office, frankly, with a, a new DA. We've seen some traction in actually getting some prosecution for some of these repeat offenders, if you were, some, if you will, some of the people that we're engaging with on a regular basis that we know are getting cited out and released back into our communities on a very quick basis. We're able to connect with the DA's office here in Bellflower to say, hey, this is a, a problem individual that's shown a repeated pattern of causing issues in our communities and they should be prosecuted with that in mind. And the DA's office has been responsive to that. That's a direct result of the efforts you guys have put into that JPA and to those services. The Beast Team will only increase that. The piece that's missing out of all of that is the outreach side of it. And that's what we've kind of come to realize as we're creating out this Beast Team, is that's, that's the part that's missing. That the input into the shelter itself has to come with individuals who understand the needs and desires of those on the streets and are able to reach out to them and convince them that this, this opportunity being presented with them, frankly, a very lucrative opportunity on behalf of the city, is worth them taking and getting off of the streets, which is ultimately a solution to our community. That's what we're working with KCB to provide because it's the piece, the piece of those three prongs that are missing for us.
Right. Yeah. And let me just talk about, Mayor, about the budget. In the last six years that the shelter has been in operation since 2020, we spent approximately $15 million to renovate the shelter and then operate the shelter. Out of that $15 million, we received funding directly from the county, and I will say this in public, $2 million directly and $900,000 coming from HCD passed to the county. That's $2.9 million. And I would say that if there's any, any bright spot in terms of the county funding our shelter, I would say publicly that Supervisor Dennis Han is the bright, is the bright star. He, she is the only bright star. Because all the rest of that funding came from the general fund, our money, your tax dollars, the $30 million, most of it, 60% came from our money. Okay? And one of my pet peeves is that Measure H collected $13 million during that period of time in the city of Bellflower. The county collected $13 million from Measure H, from our residents, our Beast, anyone buying something from Bellflower. And we only got $2.9 million out of that money. So now they changed it to Measure A, which is double what's being collected by Measure H's. So I don't know yet if money will be coming to Bellflower. But I can tell you, working with staff, working with Supervisor Han's staff, asking the county money is just like pulling teeth. It's like begging, begging our own money that they collected from, from the city. That's my, one of my biggest pet peeves. It's our money, they collected it and we still have to beg for that money. And ours, as I mentioned earlier, our city is one of the only three cities in the county that operates a shelter, one of the four, that operates a shelter. We should be proud of that. And I think going back to the survey a lot before 2018, if you remember, every two years we, we do a survey. And the results of the survey, the number one issue of our resident was always, has always been public safety until 2018. That changed the whole thing. And as you know, our council is very responsive that the residents of our city said homelessness is the number one issue way back in 2018. So we have to act on that. That's why the concept of the shelter came about. And we worked with Judge Carter for the consent decree and all these things. So I honestly can say that we've made significant progress since 2018. And from my perspective, I mean, it may be debatable. One of the, one of the, one of the most visible impact for me are city parks. There's no more nuisance, there's no more camping at city parks. And like before, they congregate, they leave their stuff at Thompson Park, at Sims Park and Carrados Park. They, they were doing that. But with the implementation of the shelter, with the consent decree, we were able to enforce our anti-nuisance, anti-nuisance ordinance. So to me, that's a big win. Sidewalks, again, it's arguable, arguable. There's still some people sleeping on sidewalks, but they're not as common as way back in 2018. So we made significant progress. But my concern now is we continue to put in $3 million every year. And from my perspective, it's kind of the law of diminishing return. We're not getting as much returns anymore. So we need to kind of address the issue. We need to reinvent the wheel, so to speak, change the course because we're not getting as much, as much impact as we had in the first four or five years. So I for one will tell you that we need to provide shelter beds, categorically. In what form or fashion, we need to help our homeless population. It's our moral obligation to help them out. I'm not about to say we should not provide homeless, homeless beds. We need to provide as a city, as a very compassionate city, we need to provide shelter beds. In what form or fashion, that's still subject to discussion. But the bottom line is, for me, we need to continue providing shelter beds. The quantity, it depends on the needs and we're going to work with staff in terms of the number of beds, but that's where I'm coming from. Timothy, can you describe to me a question? Can you describe to me, just for the benefit of the public, what's the typical day of our homeless population in the shelter? What do they do during the day so they can, and they can sit?
So the, the, the shelter at, at New Hope is a, what we call a low barrier, a congregate shelter. So that means that the folks that are staying there, they're, they're staying in sort of a large room. It's like dormitory style room that has basically rows of, of beds, right? That we don't have bunk beds at New Hope, so they're, they're single beds. They're probably about three, four feet apart from each other. So you wake up in the morning and at New Hope, we, we provide three meals a day. So you've got, we've got breakfast, lunch and dinner. It's not lavish by any measure. It's usually cold cereal and milk. And we usually do one hot meal a day, so that's, that's either a hot lunch or a hot dinner. And then, you know, sandwiches or like a mac salad or something for lunch. It varies from, from, from day to day, month to month. Once a week, clients in New Hope should, should be meeting at least once a week with their case managers. We've got, we call them navigators in, in our shelters. So the, the idea is this person's job is to come alongside the, the guests in New Hope and help them navigate the system. Because the homeless service system, especially this homeless service system, is very confusing and is difficult. You have to get all the right paperwork, you have to have all of your documentation. Then you have to, you know, scan it and upload it into an online system. And then we have to, you know, show up at a meeting at a certain time in order to advocate for, for a match. So the, the process for each individual is going to be different depending on what their needs are, what their, their struggles are and what kind of services we need to match them to. So if someone's living in recovery, you know, we're going to connect them to a 12-step program or one of the recovery services that comes with shelter. If someone, maybe they're coming and they're, they're living with disability, but they haven't, they don't have the disability documentation, right? That's why it's really important that we have that medical partner that comes in, they bring their mobile van. They can get their primary care relationship right there at the site. They can get their diagnosis papers right there on the site. They can receive the care they need. If they need prescriptions, we can facilitate, you know, prescription delivery to the site so that they can, they can focus on themselves and get better, right? For our clients who are maybe not living with those disabilities, who are, who are ready to, to go to work. You saw in the, the Kingdom Causes presentation, actually, a, a good, good portion of their clients in the Good Soil Project, they came from New Hope, right? We're, we're connecting our clients to, to those opportunities so they can work on themselves. So if, depending on the circumstances, depending on the needs of each individual, they may go to work, they may go out to see medical appointments, they may, you know, be looking for legal assistance. They maybe go to VA if they're, if they're, if they're a vet, we've connected to the SSVF Services. All of that's going to vary. We provide shuttle services from our shelter. So the, the shelter model is a no walk-up model. And so if you're staying in the shelter, we're not allowing folks to just walk in and out of the site. That's important for us because we want to be good neighbors, right? It's, it's essentially in a residential area. If you haven't come, I encourage you to come visit the shelter and see, see what it's like. But the, the way we mitigate unwanted behavior in the neighborhood is that we operate by transportation only, right? So you get on the shuttle, we'll take you to a shuttle stop, right? The places that we've designated where we'll pick people up and drop people off.
So there's no one going out the door?
Right.
By themselves?
Correct. Yeah, there's no one going out the door by themselves. There's no line of folks in front of the shelter space. The, there was a lot of concerns when we first opened. We had really regular meetings with folks in the community. And honestly, I can't remember the last time we got a complaint from anyone in the neighborhood. Initially, there was someone because their lights were angled the wrong way. And I can understand that. I wouldn't want lights shining in my bedroom either. We quickly addressed that. And since then, we haven't had any neighborhood complaints. I think, in fact, the, a lot of folks, I think, thank us for providing the service to help address concerns with Constitution Park. I think that used to be a big hotspot.
Okay.
So.
Do, um, the, the shelter guests, though, they, they leave during the day, though, don't they?
They can.
They can?
Yeah.
Are they drug tested or anything?
Oh, we, so we do operate a low barrier shelter, so that means we're not doing drug testing. We do offer recovery services and we don't allow drug use on the site, right? So you can't use drugs on the site, you're not allowed to bring drugs into the site. We do have security screening to, you know, to keep the place as safe, as healthy as possible. We find that, and it's a best practice that we want, we want the, we want to lower the barriers as much as possible for someone coming in from the streets, right? People who are living homeless in the streets, they may be using drugs for one reason or the other, right? To stay awake, to, to be, to be vigilant, right? Just to cope with the harshness of that life. In order, the highest chance for them to be successful, for them to let go of and acknowledge that, you know, they need to move on from the substance use, is when they come in and get services. And if we say you can't come in, then they won't come in. But we absolutely do provide recovery services on the site. We absolutely do not allow contraband to come on the site. And if someone comes in under the influence, we're, we're going to treat that based on their behavior, right? If someone comes in drunk and they go to bed and they don't bother anybody, you know, we'll engage with them the next day. If someone comes in and causes a ruckus, then, you know, maybe you can't stay anymore.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
How many of the 35 you have there a day that leave there to go to work and they come back?
You know, I don't, I don't want to.
I mean, you have an estimate. I didn't, you're not going to have that number. I'm sorry. I meant to say estimate. You can ballpark it.
Ballpark it? So I'll say.
Can?
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, something like that. And we're, we're working, I mean. And we're, we're working, I mean, the, 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 what's it called? Good Soil has nine of them.
So just one more?
Yeah.
Nine?
Yeah, maybe come to your property.
All right.
All right.
When I hear from the public.
I was just looking at my notes here and see if I had another question. Oh, yeah, I got a note here. On the first graph slide, they had the bars, little, yeah, keep going, forward, forward, we're there, yeah, that one, with the circle. Two point six four bed turnovers, is that every...
Every year.
Every...
Every year, each bed turns over two point six four times.
So, yeah, they average all year, so...
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Each bed. Okay. Okay. That's what I couldn't get. Thanks, Timothy. Do you have any statistics, so you know, you, last year you housed forty-four. Do you know, do we follow up on those forty-four, or how many are still housed, or...
So...
They leave and they're not coming back?
They don't come back, so we don't, the, many of those will hand off to another provider...
They might come back, though, because they're gonna say, I just lost my place. They would probably know where they go, right?
It's possible, yeah. The, I'll say, so if you, if you go to the next slide, two slides, actually, the, you'll see there, the twenty-three of them were housed through rapid rehousing. So those are folks who are matched, and we hand them off to another provider. Right? So they're getting ongoing case management, they're getting stability services in their new homes with a different provider. So there, there is follow-up for, for many of these clients. It's just that the follow-up isn't happening with, we do a warm handoff to another partner who continues to wrap around the services.
Explain wraparounds, or the RRH's wraparound, sir, you said it one more time. What, what does a wraparound housing...
So rapid rehousing, I think actually they're calling it, they've changed the name of it, but it's essentially, it's the same thing. It's, they call it time-limited subsidy now. So what that is, is it's a, it's a time-limited rental assistance. So if, if I was in the shelter...
They got assistance for a period of time.
Yeah, I'll get three months, three to six months of rental assistance, along with a year of case management. All right? So while I'm getting rental assistance, I'm getting additional services to make sure that, that I'm getting what I need to increase my income so that I can be stable once the financial services weens off.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, I might take some, anybody in the audience wanna come to the podium, chime in? Any comments? Got your card, huh?
You have to sign this again?
No.
Larry Weig. Councilman Sanchez, regarding your question about vendor, being a vendor with Mercy House, with possibly direct funding by the county, using my old law enforcement experience, what I think would happen with that, and we'd have to be very careful of it, is I think if the county funded it, we would have to start accepting people from other than Bellflower. And I suspect some neighboring cities would give us the worst of the worst, and sometimes even drop them off at the entrance and say, I just go knock on the door. That's my concern. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may answer to that question?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Weig. I... Mr. Weig, thank you for the comment, but I would say that we have seen in recent conversations with the county, a lot more flexibility and understanding in that, at the end of the day, while we focus only on Bellflower residents, they are still Angelino County residents. And I think that we have moved away from that mindset when we're having these engagements and conversations with our county partners. So I would not necessarily worry too much about that at this point in time. Because all our funding that we've received began in some form or way in that area of a conversation, but it moved away drastically, because at the end of the day...
At my age, I don't worry about much.
No worries. I, I'm just, I'm just wanting to, you know, provide insight into that, because I can see how that could be of a concern, and I understand that. And look, the, I wanna be very clear, the shelter's in my district. It's in District Four. I do not receive any complaints about it. On the contrary, on the contrary, and I know some of you may roll your eyes, and I see them, but I wanna say, I wanna share that, that it's a positive thing, what we're doing. It's a regional issue, and I get it. I'm not saying open it up to, you know, all the neighboring cities. No one's saying that at this point in time. That's not the conversation. Thank you, Larry.
Anybody else, or...
Councilmember Sanchez, let me clarify. If I'm hearing correctly, the city's position as to whether we take individuals from other cities has not changed. The county and regional perspective on our take on that perhaps has shifted a little bit, just so we're clear. I think that's the perspective, that's the track we have taken, at least.
There, yes, correct.
We've had that discussion. Just to say that.
Hi. So when we did have that meeting, you know, one thing I do wanna say is, is a big change that has happened. When Ryan put together that meeting, Ivan came up, and we were all together, you know, we asked hard questions. Ivan asked some really hard questions to Lassa and kinda put him on the spot. Stuff started changing. And that, and that's why a lot of that stuff has opened up, because you guys as a city and our representatives are, are sticking up. Yeah, we do have other areas that we need to work on, and, but I think it's good to keep it, because right now we're finally starting to see traction in there. You know, like if you look at the first couple of years, like when we were talking about the long stairs and all that, all the long stairs are gone. And they're getting connected in a lot of different ways, and that's just for everybody coming in together and just trying to help their problem.
Actually, Jason brings up an excellent point. I've talked a lot about the discussions we've had with Jason and Andrew about NKCB, about the outreach side of this. The other piece of what Brian's been working on with them is the coordination piece that Brian mentioned. That's coordination with our, I'm gonna say, service providers within our community, our church groups, et cetera, to do trainings, how they can actually effectively provide those services. But also, those coordination meetings among us and Mercy House and Lassa and Ivan and his team from, from the supervisor's office and the county CEO's office, bringing all those parties together, because what we found is, frankly, when we all sit at the table and try to find solutions to these things, we're able to keep the wheel turning and keep it moving. The challenge here in Bellflower, at least, is I don't have a homeless's, homeless services department. For instance, Norwalk has a social services department that they deal with these kinds of issues. We don't have that. We have Wong Su and myself and Brian that deal with these. So we, we need some of that assistance. And KCB has been working to fill those gaps for us, so we're looking, looking forward to that.
I do have a question. Do we know about how long we are before the Beast team is, like, operational in a sense?
As quickly as possible is my answer. I would say with all of the recruitments that we have going at the moment, we have, we do have a fair number, we're actually moving pretty darn quickly on those. Where the CSOs and maintenance workers necessary for that team are in that process, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. There are some challenges that we have to work through with that, so those recruitments are pending still. I'm gonna guess, realistically, you're probably looking two to three months. That's just off the top of my head, but that piece with KCB is gonna take some time to spin up as well, so that's probably a realistic estimate.
Hey, Ryan, since we mentioned Beast about three or four times tonight, the team, why don't we explain it to the audience?
Excellent point.
Before we get, they get the wrong idea.
Yeah. As part of the budget discussions with the council, and I'll take it even one step further back, earlier this year, you all went through a strategic planning session to really talk through what are the council's priorities for myself and my staff going forward over the next couple of years. You know, given we only have a certain amount of budget, where would you like, like us to put it? In that, a lot of these same questions were raised. Frankly, the survey you had in two thousand and eighteen regarding homelessness being a priority in your community has not changed, the perception of your community has not changed. Homelessness is still the number one issue on your residents' minds and the thing that they want us to deal with. What has changed since two thousand and eighteen is you all have devoted, as Councilmember Santanaz, Mayor Protam Sanz has mentioned, a significant amount of funding and effort into addressing that issue. And frankly, we've seen some success in that. We have a long way to go, but we have seen success in that. That's worth noting. It's worth communicating to our residents. That's one side, to help us shift that perception a little bit. But importantly, we started asking the questions of what more can we actually do to continue to solve those reticent issues that keep presenting themselves? The Beast team is a product of that. It's really focused, it's the Bellflower Enforcement and Safety Team. It's focused on doing the outreach out into our homeless communities, our known encampment, common encampment areas, riverbed areas, Caltrans properties, some of the tucked away areas and shopping centers and things, where we know that we get common issues, because we have reports from Southwest and they're out there on a regular basis. It's doing the outreach in those areas, and then along with that outreach, actually doing enforcement. So we have a, a CSO that will be dedicated to that team, a community services officer that is the public safety arm of that, to be doing the enforcement side. We have Southwest Patrol, and we'll have maintenance teams to be doing some of the cleanup side of it. Because we already devote a significant amount of effort to doing a lot of those cleanups. The problem we have currently is I'm pulling maintenance workers from all of their other duties for an extended period of time, sometimes multiple weeks, for a large-scale encampment to do that cleanup, and spending a lot of money to do that, which means all the other stuff they're supposed to be doing doesn't get done for that two weeks. So we're, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul currently. What the Beast team allows us to do is provide focus on that, a dedicated team, that is what they do. They do the outreach, they do the cleanups, and they do the safety and enforcement. Dedicated services to our community on an ongoing and regular basis. That's the Beast team, in a nutshell.
And what's Beast stand for?
Bellflower Enforcement and Safety Team.
Yeah, okay. It's not a real beast. And then, we, you know, you didn't, I don't think you mentioned the partners that we have, or what departments that we have, a little from Public Safety, Public Works...
Yeah, it is really a partnership between Public Safety Department...
We call Kingdom Causes kind of outreach, too, right?
Yeah, that's the piece when we originally, you might keep in mind, we're sort of building this plane as we're flying it. But as we started thinking this through, we started with the enforcement and safety function of this, but we've, as we've looked at it, the piece that was missing in our original concept was the outreach side. And we still have to work that through with KCB and come up with that and bring that to you guys. But that is gonna be the third leg of that table to make those services actually functional. Ideally, getting people into the shelter and then getting them out of the shelter into the next thing. This is not a one solution is gonna solve this problem, it's a multi-pronged approach.
And what Ryan didn't say, it's, it's a team within our organization that when we see a problem, we schedule the problem and schedule, and it may take weeks to go to a site that needs this help, and then we'll pull, pull the people that volunteered for this, this team and get here all the resources in, in one day, and then we go to that site or go to that location and, and handle it that way. But that's what happens.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Smooth hits the nail on the head, whether intentionally or not intentionally. It's a multi, multi-pronged approach. There's a lot of moving items to, towards this whole, this whole item of concern, right? It, one, it is, we are now in our own city doing affordable housing projects, right? We've got those in the pipeline. That was one of the issues, that there's nowhere for, no placement, no additional placement, nowhere for people to transition into an affordable unit. We've got a project in line going forward in that. We've got a, you know, the Beast team that is missing a specialized mental health professional or some sort of expert in this field. We're adding that into the equation with the partnership with Kingdom Causes, because we have to remember CityNet was, we cut CityNet out, and now unfortunately, you know, Kingdom Causes no longer has that funding available to do that. So we're bringing them back into the equation. That will ramp up our housing numbers again. And at the end of the day, I just, Mr. Wong Su, Mr. Wong Su Lee, could you put the present, the Lassa numbers up for me? Or this number's fine. All right? We started this process here. We went from one seventy-two unsheltered counted individuals in our city to sixty-four in, in a span of five years or so. I, I, I think that, you know, like in, like in golf, the better you get, the lower that number gets, the harder it gets. I understand that. But we have something that is functioning and that is working. And, and I think right now is the time to double down on what we're doing as a city and continue to be a leader in the community, continue to be a leader in the region. Not expecting, I understand Mr. Mayor Protam's concerns or, you know, issues with the lack of funding coming back to our city, but I think that's where we and staff can do, can work harder to make sure that funding comes back. You know, that's why I am on the La Casa board. I represent us and our region on that board to ensure that we bring dollars back to the city. So those are the kind of things that we are doing proactively to bring those dollars back. Because we, we as taxpayers are paying these, these, these...
I don't think anybody's saying we're not doing a good job.
No, exactly. I know that. No, I know that. And I'm, I'm just, from my perspective, it's, it's, that's the way I see it, is it's a doubling down opportunity versus a pulling back opportunity.
I think I look at it as, can we do a better job?
Exactly.
Anybody else want, wanted to come forward and make a comment?
Hello again.
Hi.
Yeah, Mr. Sanchez has made several comments about doubling our efforts and doubling down on this endeavor. If this is such a grand endeavor, why doesn't it become privatized? Sell it to the businesses, to the churches, but take it off the backs of the residents of the city? We should not be having to stifle this, to me, abomination. It was once, I was at the first meeting, and it was sold that this is a five-year plan. If it doesn't work out, we can always cancel the plan. It should be canceled, should've been canceled yesterday. We still have countless homeless running around this city, terrorizing the city. Heavens, I got a dentist that lives down the street, or has an office down the street. She's got homeless living behind the building adjacent to her that run her customers out. They can't even open their doors in the morning because of the homeless. And she's told, nothing we can do by the Sheriff's Department. I'm glad we're paying the Sheriff's Department millions of dollars a year for that kind of services. We owe these people zero, absolutely nothing. They chose this path that they traveled down themselves. They chose the drug of their choice. That was my comment five years ago, it stands today. Nobody put this drug in their body. Again, they chose it. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Anybody else wanna come forward and make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Ivan Sulik. I'm here representing your county supervisor, Janice Hahn. I'm her homeless and housing deputy. In addition, I have my colleague Lauren Yocumizo here. And I just wanna thank the city of Bellflower for the leadership in creating this New Hope Shelter. I remember when I was there touring with the supervisor as we were opening up that shelter, and you, the city of Bellflower, being the leader here in Spa Seven, in the Gateway Cities, saying that we are going to address homelessness, we are going to join in and address those who are in need. And so we're so, we're glad that we have come so far, as Councilmember Sanchez was saying, the numbers show that you have gotten successes. And I think that right now, we are in a transition period here in the county. You know, the board supervisor just voted to create its own county department, the new homeless and housing department, taking away certain roles and responsibilities from Lassa. You know, I sit on the La Casa, which is the LA County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency, with my second vice chair, Sanchez. You know, new dollars coming in for the creation of affordable housing, renter protections, legal representation. And so right now, we're in a very unique period of transition. So what I would recommend is if the council would continue at the stat, the current status of the shelter, so that as the county establishes a new department, the roles and responsibilities of Lassa and the new department are etched out, La Casa establishing its metrics, goals, and programs, and, and the continuation of the local solutions funds going to our cities and COGS. You know, maybe waiting as, to see how this transition, how this year will end up so that the council can make a better decision next year, once all these new aspects have settled, the dust has settled, you've seen the new departments, the new agencies, the new metrics, and then maybe a better decision can be presented once those have happened. So, but Supervisor Hahn's continued to be proud of the city of Bellflower and we hope you'll continue this effort.
Mr. Sulik, can you take questions since you're, you offered yourself?
Sure. I'm at your service, Mr. Mayor Protam.
Yeah, what is the county doing in terms of addressing the chronic homelessness, the drug addicts, the, those who suffer abuse and the mentally ill person? What are they doing about it?
Well, we're looking to expand Care Court, Care Court Services within the county of Los Angeles. We're also working with the Department of Mental Health. You know Supervisor Hahn just got millions of dollars to expand Metropolitan State Hospital and create a mental health village, which is right the city over on that campus. In addition, we're looking to expand our home teams, our homeless outreach mental evaluation teams through our Department of Mental Health. And so these are some of the key mental health aspects that we're working on, just in our district here locally, the biggest one being an expansion of Mental, Metropolitan State Hospital specifically for those experiencing mental health issues.
And how is the Care Court functioning? Can you tell us?
Well, I don't, I don't have the, I wasn't prepared to have the Care Court data-
Because I made a referral to the supervisor, there was a woman in Bellflower, one of the, she lives on a bus shelter and staff approached her and asked question and she said that she has no name. So there's no way that we can help her because there's no tie with the city of Bellflower. She has no name, so there's no connection. So I was wondering how the Care Court can, I, I think she's a perfect example of someone that a Care Court can help. I don't know what happened to that lady.
Right, right. Well, I mean, if we could get the information after and we could check on specifically because I don't have that information on me.
I'm just kind of wondering how it's functioning now, so.
So I got a question on Care Court, because Care Court started about four years ago.
Yes.
Right? And I thought it was going to be the greatest thing there was, we're going to get, finally get a judge and go to court and get some people convicted, 51, 50 mental, I haven't seen anything. You, and then, and now you said that the, the county's going to ramp it up?
Yes.
That's what you just said.
Yeah, yeah.
Now they're, you know, I hope they've been ramping it up for four years, but in what way are they ramping it up now?
I believe there's, and I wasn't prepared to speak, I believe there's-
You opened it.
I know, I know. I believe they're expanding of some of the programs through, through and the capacity for our Department of Mental Health through Care Court.
Well, I, I would hope the ramping up would be more judges, more people going through it. That's what I was hoping to hear. We're going to ramp it up to a hundred a day. That would be great.
I would say this also, part of the connection that we've made with Ivan and Kingdom Causes and Mercy House and LASSA, et cetera, and CEO's office, the more that connection happens, the more we see those countywide services coming to Bellflower. One of the challenges we've pretty clearly identified, actually K C B identified for us, is that the countywide services that should be coming to Bellflower, we don't get our frankly fair share of those services because we're not out there asking for them. And so the more we're able to coordinate those meetings, put all the parties at the table and say, I have this specific problem, what are the services available for us to meet it, the more Ivan can come to us and say, I have the services to do that, let's connect the, connect the dots and we actually get the services. That's definitely a piece that's been missing on our end.
Before you sit down, because once you sit down, they cannot ask you questions anymore. How much funding are we getting from the county to operate the shelter this year?
An excellent question, actually.
That's why he seems, that's why he asks questions.
Two parts to the question and I'm going to kick it to Wong Su to answer the specifics of the question, but I will say it this way. We're currently in the process of working through the county to get some additional funding that they had available to the tune of about $960,000. The challenge with that funding is similar to the challenges we faced in the past with the county of supplantation. Basically, we're spending X number of dollars on these services here in Bellflower currently. Some of the county's language has been, well, we can't not spend those dollars, this has to be in addition to those dollars. And our argument has been, and the same argument that Woody here's making and that other shelters or other folks that have shelters are making, is that we're the ones that stepped up and provide these services, why should we be penalized for providing the services that no one else has been willing to provide? And we continue to make that argument to the, to the county as recently as today. So Wong Su, with that said, can you answer the question as to this year funding level?
Well, wait, 25 to 26? We're estimating about 1.36 million.
For one year or two years?
In, in, in one year.
In one year.
To the grant that Mr. Smooth is talking about, as Measure H is sunsetting, there is some remaining funds that we're working out with the county and we're working through this supplantation language that we're hoping goes away.
And, and as soon as they get back tomorrow, we'll have a conversation with our CEOs.
So what do they want us to do? Close the shelter for one day and then reopen the next day? So it's new funding? Is that what they want us to do?
New Hope 2.0.
Yeah, exactly. Officially close it one day and then reopen the next day.
But in addition to that, we're expecting about $400,000 for the Measure A Local Solutions Fund.
Which I think has some kind of strings attached to it also, similar to this supplantation, correct?
Several days ago, I think the county and COG has been having some discussion regarding supplantation as well. We're still waiting for that to be finalized, but the COG has not reached out to us with any funding agreement of any kind, so we're still waiting for them to work that out as well.
The one piece I would add to that is, and this is no secret to Ivan, is we have a request out to the Supervisor's Office. Ivan has been working his tail off to make this happen with regard to our acquisition of the property on which New Hope is sitting. We do have a request out for some funding to assist in that purpose because frankly, as you all have identified, this is a very expensive endeavor for us, both from the operation standpoint and lease or ownership of the property standpoint, it's a very expensive endeavor. So Ivan's team has been working very hard to find some assistance for us in that process as well, to ensure that we can keep this going.
All right.
I'm going to sit down.
Okay, sit down, make a run for it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ivan.
Okay, so I just have a couple of questions. So is it my understanding whether we have the shelter or not, that we can't make these homeless leave?
In the, the shelter, the, you're talking about the people that are in the shelter?
No, no, no. So when we opened the shelter, it was said if we offered the shelter and they refused services, we could make them leave the city.
Yeah, or you get arrested. That's what was sold to me and Sonny, we were the ones here.
That's what was sold us.
That was a sold. And guess what? And I asked and they asked and talked and the sheriff says, no, absolutely not, we don't do that. It's not policy.
So that's where we are still today, whether we have a shelter or not. So whether we spend these millions of dollars on the shelter, we're still there.
Yep.
In some capacity, I would say that's a correct, a correct statement, however-
Our statements?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. I want to make sure, I know mine's right.
Certainly we, certainly the challenge remains to the, the practicality of actually enforcing our ordinances. What's gone away is that the legal requirement for us to provide a shelter in order to be able to do that. Under the current standing with the Supreme Court case, we have the legal ability to enforce our anti, anti nuisance ordinances. The practical ability is an entirely separate question. It's part of the reason the Beast team has been started, it's part of the reason you have the J P A, you've done with the other cities, it's part of the reason we've had the conversations with the DA. So that wheel is starting to turn post Grants Pass and trust me, we're not the only ones having this conversation of how do we actually do the enforcement piece of this better? So we are seeing some successes in that, one of which I mentioned is a problematic recurrent case, I would say.
Yeah, I think-
But the challenge does exist, certainly.
Mrs. Brown was asking, well, that's why we have a shelter. It's, we know what we're doing now, we have a shelter, it's existing, we spent a lot of money for it, what do we do with it? That's why we're here tonight, we're talking about it. Is there something else we can do better? We're thinking outside the box because the five people that were up here when we went and gotten that, that consent degree, were sold something and were told something that we never got. And I, for one, I'm saying I'm very disappointed and I asked, and it's been five years. And we're spending a lot of money.
Because I can, I mean, every day, it's, it, the homeless are crazy, it's crazy here.
Oh, yeah.
It's crazy. Everywhere you go, you deal with us.
Yeah, it's, and the residents of our town, the quality of life that everybody lives in and sees these people every day, so they don't feel they have a good quality of life.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Because of the, because of the knuckleheads that, that society allows to roam the streets.
And, and so, so we're talking about like opening these, the metropolitan, you know, the mil, to get mental help, but what if they refuse that help? Then we're just like right back where we are now? They can say no, just like they can say no to going to the shelter, right?
Yeah.
So the ones that are out there on drugs who don't want help.
It's worse than that, Priscilla, I know, if we get it on. So one day I was driving down the street and around my shop and-
On Artesia.
I see one of the locals, Marcus is his name.
Marcus, oh, I know the name of Marcus.
And he's urinating right in front of me. So I video it.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm going to give this to the sheriff.
Yeah.
Littleby told me that Wendy's behind me, sees the whole thing.
Yeah.
Not only that, Dan Coops is behind her, sees the whole thing.
Okay.
I give that video to the sheriff, we can't do nothing.
Okay, okay.
Very disappointed.
I'm totally aware of Marcus.
I get a big letter saying all the reasons why we shouldn't do anything with him.
I mean, I see him going to work, I see him coming home from work, I see him doing all kinds of crazy things in the streets. It's, yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah.
So I just kind of feel like, so we can't do anything either way, whether we have the shelter open or not?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Pretty much, that's why, that's why we question everything we do because it's pretty tough for us. We have something that does, does good. A shelter does good, we agree with that. It's, it's the rest of the 80% of the homeless people around town that we can't do nothing with because they don't want help.
Okay, okay, and whether they're on like private property or public property, is there a difference between that?
Well, it doesn't matter, you can't get them to come to, you can't get the sheriff to come to a party, they're not going to come to homeless either.
Well, that's true.
Unless somebody's getting hurt.
You're right. So, yeah, um, okay, yeah, I mean, because we have the homeless, yeah, in our area who are, you know, standing on the corners yelling and screaming and threatening business owners and doing all kinds of crazy stuff.
Exactly.
So we just, this is boggling my mind that-
Well, Marcus is out of town because he, he assaulted somebody over Golden Crow. So they finally got him locked up for now after about 10 years.
I was just telling-
But somebody had to get hurt.
I was just telling Matt, I don't think I've seen Marcus in maybe a week or so.
And somebody had to get hurt till that happened, so he's-
Isn't that what happens every time Marcus is put away? I mean, he hurts somebody? Okay, and then, and then, what was my other question? So this Beast thing, we already have that and who's involved in that?
Yeah, we budgeted for it, it's in our budget, we haven't started it yet, we're ramping up. The budget just got approved July 1st.
Okay, so that's not happening?
It's not happening yet. It's, it's a vision. It's a vision that we're trying to do something.
Okay, and I, I'm, so when Southwest Patrol or any, anybody else, I've just seen Southwest Patrol stop these people and I've kind of observed what happens. So when they, when they approach homeless people and do, are they able to offer them services, like Southwest Patrol, are they able to refer them to the shelter?
Yeah, they will, as, you know, but if you, those are the people they're, the people they're going to-
Yeah.
Are not the people who are going to accept it because they're going to the bus benches where the party is.
If they say no, basically Southwest Patrol or any of these organizations, just leave. If, if the person says, no, I don't want, I don't want to go in the shelter.
Well, the Southwest is pretty persistent to keep them moving, you can't, you can't be on the sidewalk and they'll, they move.
Really?
To another location, yeah.
Okay, because I've, the times I've seen them, they, they just drive away. There's just one location in particular, but, and I haven't seen you be there recently, but I have seen Southwest, you know, come up to these people and say-
There are some hotspots that we all know about and, yeah, and you, you're probably noticing a hotspot too.
I probably know them all.
The regulars now.
Probably know them all. Okay, um, I think that's what, okay, I think that was everything. So I, I just wanted to clarify that whether we have the shelter or not, we're, we're not able to move them along pretty much. Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor-
We're moving them, there, there's, there's homeless that they go to the shelter and they get housed, as you saw some on the report here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Those are the, those are the people that want help and try to get better themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, if there is no shelter, it, it is very likely that we will see 35 to 38 individuals back on our streets because they're not going to go anywhere else, they're going to stay in Bellflower.
Keep in, keep in mind-
Oh, no, I understand that. I mean, I, and no offense to any of you, because like I said, I was, I was involved in, in hearing all of what you guys set up with Judge Carter and all that, so I understand that. But quite honestly, I don't think our city looks any better than Lakewood who doesn't have a shelter or Norwalk, I don't think Norwalk has a shelter, or any of these other places that don't have shelter. I don't think Bellflower looks any better, really. So, anyway, just my opinion.
And we're unfortunate to have a freeway going through the middle of town, Caltrans doesn't do a very good job.
That's a fact.
That's another.
Mr. Mayor, I think you have Captain Holguin here as well.
Captain! Hey, you're dressed nice, nice tonight, Captain.
Sharp, Captain. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Nice to talk to you.
Thank you. And also I will reach out to you regarding the, the lack of service that we provided. Yes, after the meeting, I'll contact. Absolutely, please allow us to correct that behavior. Thank you.
We, we can give you some more residence names if you wish.
Absolutely.
Brian, can, I'm serious. So the gentleman that was here, last, last meeting, lives over in Sun Rayo Chat. Yeah, can you give him, the captain may want to talk to him about his parties? You know, my neighbor guy across the street and that woman that was here, what was her name? We have a lot of them, this is, what Priscilla was saying is nothing.
Something like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Brian, just give them all of them.
Give them all, please.
Yeah, we, we definitely have to, to work with the party calls, specifically on the weekends, we get quite a few, especially in the summer. And what we would like to do is obviously if we have that communication with our neighbors, do conflict resolution with the Sheriff Department, that's something that we can offer. Because most of these times, it's usually our neighbors that, that is doing the parties and we want to build that communication to speak with them, to see what we can do. Because we will respond to these locations and I, again, there is several people that, again, that, like exactly what you said, party calls are usually on the lower priority list.
The residents are losing faith in the Sheriff Department, I'll tell you right now.
Okay, and, and-
And society has made it, it's not your fault.
No, no, I understand.
Society has made it that way.
I understand that and we will address those party calls. My concern is right now is the homeless, that the Sheriff Department is not doing anything. With respect, Mayor, we have been doing some, we have been making arrests. We don't, we don't arrest on the anti-camping, but if we receive a call of an individual who's trespassing-
I'm telling you what, we were sold.
Right, right. I don't know, I don't know-
You weren't in the room.
I wasn't there, I know what we are doing now. We are making arrests for trespassing, specifically on private property. There's a letter of agencies, we will go out there, we will make their arrest. And it's in all five, in all five cities, we make arrests for the shoplifting violations. You know, again, because it's a chronic problem, we have been making arrests specifically not for anti-camping, but for the other minor, minor crimes that we do that are associated with it. Once we get onto the scene, we find out who that person is, if they have a warrant, we, we would arrest for the warrant, if they're drinking in public, we would cite in the field, but we are doing some enforcement.
You mentioned trespassing, so if you have a business, is there a way that the, that you have a bad actor there and a business calls and can, in California, can the business say, I want that person trespassed?
A private, private property, absolutely.
Trespassed. So that's different than a letter of agency, right? And if that person ever comes back again, they get arrested, right?
They would do the same thing, the owner would do the same, because that person come back for general business.
But if he keeps coming back, if you've been trespassed once and you come back and you just say, I want to trespass again and-
Absolutely.
But that doesn't make sense.
What if that person wants to come back and go to the liquor store and actually buy something?
Well, if a business owner trespasses somebody, they don't want that individual to ever come back. If I, if my business, I trespass somebody, if I have that right to do that, and he comes, that, he or she comes back, and, and you call the sheriff again, don't they go to the clink? Don't they get arrested? Because they, they have it on record that they've been trespassed once and they came back.
Right, right, obviously if you're, as a business owner, if you're saying you don't want that person at all, then we would come in, you would
Because you have it on record that this, this person has got kicked out of this business and he can never, ever come back. Because that's the way it was explained to me.
Obviously, every visit is going to be different.
You don't get trespass each time.
Every, every, every visit is going to be a different trespassing. So if you have a letter of agency, when it's a closed business, that's definitely we can
Not when it's closed, when it's open, like
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't think trespass necessarily works that way as a penal code violation. The penal code would require that somebody be on that site and be asked to leave and not leave, and then they could be charged with trespassing if they came back tomorrow to do business at that location.
So you got to chase them away? Okay, so
It would be a specific violation per incident, so it doesn't necessarily work that you can permanently ban them from the property.
Well, if
Right.
If you have someone that's under the influence of causing a ruckus, and they come back, you trespass them, and they come back a week later and cause a ruckus, then that's the same thing, isn't it?
Yeah, we'd go back in and
And then you kick them out again, and a business owner can do that.
Part of the challenge that the Sheriff's Department has faced is not necessarily the Sheriff's Department, we've heard it directly from our deputies as well, is when they arrest somebody, they're simply not prosecuted or simply cited out and back on the streets in a couple of hours. And the challenge our deputies face is as they're out on the streets, they maybe arrest that individual, go through the process of booking them, getting them into Lakewood Station, into the jails, and they're released back out on the streets. I've now had that deputy out of the streets and in doing a processing for somebody that's going to be right back out on the streets, but the deputy's been occupied for that number of hours. That's not beneficial for anybody. The challenge there is not necessarily the deputy arresting the individual, the challenge is the prosecution on the backend. That's part of the wheel that we've seen turn with frankly, a new DA, in the DA's office, we've seen some effort in that regard. Where we've seen it specifically in Bellflower is Brian working with the captain and his detectives, and through the JPA to work with our local, I'm going to say DA representative, I don't know what her title is, here in Bellflower Court to say, hey, this is a repeat individual, kind of the circumstances you're talking about, where this is a repeat individual that's caused a number of problems in our community over and over and over again. This is one of our top 10, if you will. We think this should be taken into account when this prosecution comes before you, and should be a more serious prosecution than simply being cited out. That might get that individual off of the street in some more permanent capacity than, say, two hours that it takes to book them and cite them back out.
But you got to start a paper trail of an individual that's a bad actor, there has to be consequences. Whether it takes the sheriff a long time to process them, then it's in the system. Does it again, it's in the system, it's, I don't have to explain it, the more times you're in the system, the more, when you go to court and see a judge, then you look at everything and say, this is a problem. And that person can get taken care of then, but if we don't ever report crimes, half of the, half of society, I don't think reports crimes anymore. And so if we're not reporting them, no one's getting tagged on a, you know, there's not a paper trail for somebody. Am I, you got to know that a lot of stuff don't get reported.
The city manager is right regarding the, the frequent problem, especially the, the ones that just shock the senses, you know? Those are the things that we can bring to the DA, personally the detective taking the case of DA and telling him the whole explanation on it, on why this person needs to be held accountable, either being locked up or some kind of
Like that gentleman Marcus that we've talked about tonight, and that, and I think you may even know his name.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah.
And he's went through the system, all the way to court, and then whoever's prosecuting him, says, well, I don't think he's 51, 50. And he's back out 72 hours later. And it's not the sheriff's fault, but that, that's one, for that is a perfect example. And then it took an assault
Right.
To get him off the streets, after, this is like 10 years.
Council, I, I respect, I respect your, your job. You, you guys have a hard job when constituents talking, telling you regarding the quality of life issues that you have to deal with. And those are the complaints you get all the time. We, we are balancing it, quality of life and the part one crime that we have to balance. Because I know you, you get complaints regarding quality of life. At the Sheriff Department, we get complaints regarding the public safety, regarding shootings, regarding robberies. So we do balance that quality, and we'll do everything we can to make the residents of Bellflower safe.
I got a question for you. Somebody's in a car accident, and the sheriff shows up. Is it required, if nobody's hurt, to do a police report?
So our contract for, for the City of Bellflower, the Sheriff Department, any traffic collision that we respond to, we shall write a traffic report.
I asked an officer three times.
Yeah.
And it was no. Well, if there's a problem, I can do it later, the next day or the next day.
This happened to you, sir?
Yes, sir.
How long ago?
We'll talk about that later, it's not on this venue.
This is probably a separate conversation.
Yeah, that is our, that is our policy, is to write the report. There's times where people just want to exchange
It was for, is this the way our residents get treated? That's what I was thinking.
Right.
But anyway, we can talk later on that.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, he's coming.
Atmosphere has changed. Really changed. Okay, now let me try to gather my thoughts together to get my thoughts out there on, Council, thank you for, I just want to say, where we were when the New Hope House started and to where we are now, the city and the staff have done a fantastic job of where it is now. And we just discussed where we're at with the, with the law enforcement, with what society's dealing with now, with everything that, with, with the way society is itself now. The spirit, or the conscience isn't there anymore to, to, the moral compass of doing right and wrong, it's really changed. But I just wanted to say, the direction the city is going with the new house and everything that, that the city manager has been talking about as far as putting more teams together and, and being able to move forward with dealing with the homeless, with Kingdom Causes and the whole thing. It takes time. But can you imagine if we didn't have any of this, where we would be? Things would be 10 times worse, 20 times worse, 50 times worse. You're doing a good job that, that I think a positive outweighs the negatives. Okay? That's the point I wanted to get across. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, how are you?
Good.
As you all know, I'm an advocate who tries to match people in need to services, no matter what it would, should be. So I would like to invite everybody to Google the 12 myths of homelessness. I believe I received these through LA County. So there's the 12 myths of homelessness. So I'd like to read number eight. They just need to get a job. A significant portion of homeless people do have jobs, they just cannot afford to pay rent. Some receive disability income due to physical or mental problems, but still cannot afford rent. For those wanting to work, a common refrain from those interviewed by my research team, the complications of applying for a job with no address, no clean clothes, no place to shower, and the stigma of being homeless for having a criminal record, or make such individuals far less competitive in the low wage market. These things are interesting. Nine, the homeless are not part of our community. Surveys have shown 70 to 80% of homeless persons are from the local area or lived there for a year or longer before becoming unhoused. They lived in unsanitary conditions because they don't care. Living outdoors means having no regular place for body functions, to dispose of trash, to store food, safety, or to bathe. The homeless person who cares for has few alternatives. Our research shows that lacking access to a shower is one of the most humiliating aspects of being homeless. Okay, so there's 12 myths of homelessness. I really would like people to read them and to look into them and like
Address us, please.
Yeah, process it, and, you know, think about these things. Like for me, recently, I've been a resident of Bellflower for many, many years, as you first, you all know, and just recently. So I'm at the traffic light, Lakewood and something, I'm in Bellflower. I'm at Lakewood Boulevard at a traffic light, okay? And all I notice is this homeless man linking, limping. So I said, oh my God, I'm trying to give out shirts, socks, and belts, because most homeless, they'll take whatever clothes you give them. So they need a belt, because they're a size zero, and the clothes they're given, like I asked one homeless man, can I get you something? He goes, any size, any size. I said, no, what size are you? Because I'm going to hunt you clothes, right? And he just will take anything. Then they need belts, I can already see he can't hold up the too big a clothes. Okay, anyway, I diverted. So recently, just a few weeks ago, I'm at the, a traffic light, and all I notice is he has, he's limping. And I'm like, oh God, I got sandals in my back and I got clothes. So he crosses the street, and then all of a sudden I notice he jumps on a skateboard. So now I have to, I, I make a U-turn at the light, and there's a sign that says I can make a U-turn. So I circle back and I'm like this stop, because he's traveling on his skateboard. So when I get up there, all of a sudden I notice, I want to say a bad word, DM, this guy is a child. He's not an adult, he's a child on a skateboard, his face is black. I'm like, this isn't, for those people that think homeless, I'm, like, for a minute there, I gave him my best speech, I said, hunt down a program, get yourself together, you know, don't give, go into hopeless. I gave him the best speech I put, gave him the clothes, the shoes, you know, socks, whatever, and a bag. And he jumps on his skateboard. Okay, recently, also in Bellflower, I'm at a grocery store, this person's looking for food in the trash, I walked him, I said, what's up? And he says, da, da, da. I don't know that they're even 16. You know what I mean? I said, just, I said, if you wait here a minute, I go out there, go in the store and buy him a sandwich. I said, wait, I'm going to go see, get you a sandwich, is that okay? He said, yes. I come back, I'm not talking to an adult. Okay, I'm serious about helping the homeless. I've decided I'm going to hand out shirts and this
Let's keep it in context of what we're talking about here tonight, though. Your life story, your, your
The homeless
Is great, good job.
The point, the point is, the homeless, I don't believe that anybody chooses homeless. They get into circumstances, now like I said, rent is going up in Bellflower 10% a year. There, a lot of them that I see, they're either senior citizens, or, and they're even children. I'm experiencing that live.
Oh, we, we know all about that, yes. You're right, you're absolutely right.
Can I please invite everybody, and everybody who's watching this, please, please, please Google the 12 myths of homelessness and think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. If we're not seeing anybody else coming up, we're going to take a break. We need a health break up here. I got a very important note. All right, we're going to break for 10 minutes. Let the record reflect at the council's backs from our break, and we're in session. Okay, after that, we got a little break. We've heard from the community. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, let, let me start. Based on the information that was provided today, information coming from the county that they will provide some kind of funding to the tune of almost $1 million, and then the, they will contribute towards the purchase of the facility, something like that. And on the other hand, assuming that the, the contract with the, with Mercy House, let's say for the sake of discussion, $2.5 million a year, at 35 beds, that equates to about $70,000 per person a year, roughly. So that to me is, is a very, a big pill to swallow in terms of homelessness, but at the same time, I recognize that as a city, we have, we have, to do our obligation to help solve this problem, which is a regional problem, so we, we need to our fair share in solving this issue. So I don't want to abandon the, the shelter at this point. So with those funding coming in from the county, what I'd like to suggest is that to negotiate with Mercy House to scale down, instead of 50, maybe 35, a little bit up to staff, to find a sweet spot in terms of the number, and maybe if it can be scalable to the minimum of 30 beds, because we are, there's some restriction in terms of the funding, so that will be our baseline. Hopefully the cost can come down from the $2.5 billion. So I, I would recommend to continue operating the New Hope Shelter for another year, given those, given those conditions. The county funding and hopefully, and hopefully by next year, our conversation is going to be very, very much different. I'm hoping that the number of homeless unhoused population will be much smaller, and we can do, we can research in terms of alternative situation if the county funding doesn't come, and then the homeless number of population goes down. So at this point, I would, my suggestion is to continue a scaled down version of the current contract with Mercy House and continue working with the, with the county to secure those funding.
Can I ask a question about that? Could we, in those discussions, could we still make sure that if we needed 40 beds, we, or whatever the number is, that we, that we have that option?
Scalable, scalable. We'd minimum of, we'd minimum of 30.
Okay, I didn't catch scalable, sorry.
Scalable, yeah.
A sliding scale.
If we were to save some cost savings of that, could, I would like, not just to save it for the general fund, I would like to save it and try to put it to policing bad actors, or mental health issues, or something like that.
Yeah, sure.
You know, because that's still part of our problem. Victor, you got anything? Are you still thinking?
No, I'm still thinking, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I'm, well, first off, for, foremost, yes, keep it going. Appreciate that. I think the, the minimum of 30, ideally a sliding scale, I think that if we, I think our numbers will see some more success. I think there's still 16 individuals out there that I think, out of some of those, I think we can see come back into our shelters, into the shelter. One more thing I'd like to add to that, I would say, and I don't think this has to be a formal committee, but I, I think myself and Mayor Potem Sanchez have been working very, or have been working together to try to get some of this funding for the acquisition of it, of the shelter. What I'd like to see us continue to do is, Mayor Potem and I continue to seek additional funding, ongoing operational funding. I know he's done that in the past, but I'd like to see us to get to the point where maybe we can access, you know, the full cost of it. Maintaining it with, I, I, I'm saying this from direct conversation, one-on-one conversations with, with other supervisory districts about that need, about, hey, at the end of the day, these are LA County residents, yes, they are Bellflower first, but they are LA residents and we should access this funding. And I think the COG supports that mentality, and I know Hector Delatorre, the director there, is fighting for that. And I know that the Whittier Shelter is also fighting for that, so I'd like to see a committee reestablish, whether it needs to be formal or informal, that's up to our city attorney to determine, but I'd like to see that effort continue here, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, that makes sense, because as I mentioned earlier, if you look at the, the tax dollars being collected in the city, I mean, we need to get more than that, actually, to get our fair share, but
Absolutely, and, and we could
About $2 million, $3 million a year, we only got $2 million over six years.
Right, and we can deploy that into more mental health services, more services on the, on the, on the ground level. My concern would be, obviously, Mercy House viability, of being able to continue to provide the service. At the end of the day, I know that there are, you know, fixed costs that may or may not make sense for them. And so I think
Exactly.
It's important that we keep an open mind as to what comes back, you know? Because obviously they're, they don't have a proposal for us today.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, we'll live it up to staff to negotiate that contract.
Yeah, we can do that. I, number one, I don't necessarily need a formal committee to do that, but I think but I think the effort thus far between the Mayor Protem and Councilmember Sanchez has been effective. And sometimes, frankly, sometimes your voices in that effort carry a different weight than our voices do, which is helpful. So any continued effort we can get from that regard is helpful from our perspective. A couple of things to keep in mind. Number one, as we ramp up our enforcement efforts and as we ramp up our outreach efforts, presuming we get, we do the contract with KCB, we may see that increase, so having that flexibility from 35 to 50 beds, maybe that adjusts and changes over time, because we're adjusting the way we're doing what we're doing. You know, like I said, we're building the plane as we're flying it. So keep that in mind. That flexibility is beneficial to us. Also, keep in mind, when we're talking about a per-person cost, keep in mind that bed turnover rate. You had 130-something, I don't remember, 132 maybe, individuals that went through the shelter. So it's not just the 35 necessary that are in there on any given day. That bed is turning over, so it's more of a perhaps per-bed rate, but that might be multiple people in that bed for that 70K, if you will, cost.
But that's the cost per person, though. I mean, you divide 2 and a half million dollars by 35.
Right, but that's, that's 35 beds, not necessarily 35 individuals. So it's really the cost per bed, not necessarily the cost per person. So just something to keep in mind. I don't think it's either here, here nor there, but the cost is the cost, and it's a very expensive cost for the city.
Right, yeah. That's what I was pointing out, yeah.
Okay, for point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, will this nego, contract come back to us? Obviously, there's no contract before us today.
Right, the contract will have to come back to you. Obviously, the contract with Mercy House is expiring the end of next month. So sometime in the next 30 days, we'll have to have some contract, in some form at least, whether it's, you know, hey, we've worked through these issues and we think we have something that's workable with Mercy House, or we're going to do an interim contract with them to, as we go through this process, and either negotiate with them or put out an RFP or whatever that looks like. But regardless, in any event, a contract is going to be coming back before you.
So you have enough direction, kind of, right now, and then we'll put it in a kind of emotion form?
I don't know that I need a formal motion. I think I have the direction I need.
Direction, okay, good. It makes it easy. More flexible, unless we like flexible.
If the attorney says so, yeah.
Okay. All right, with that said, then we can get Dan, right?
Yep.
No, Ryan was checking on you, I know that.
I did forget. Did you have a good time alone in the room?
Well, yes. It was like planning commission days.
Oh, that's right.
All right, next item on that is our consent calendar. Does anybody have any recusals on the consent calendar or any items pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I am out on 14F because I have properties not far from the paving that's going to be provided. I can leave again if you'd like.
I'm so sorry, Dan. I need to pull 14F for a quick question.
Oh, you're going to be good.
It's paving for heaven.
Let's get it over with.
Do you want me to leave, Mr. Mayor?
Anybody else need to pull something for discussion? Okay, we're good. We're only going to do 14F.
Just go by the door, Dan.
Just stay up on the, stay on the riser, don't fall off.
Sorry, Dan.
That's okay.
Mr. Gregg, these items on the repaving of Alondra Boulevard from Bellflower to the Paramount border.
To the west city limit.
To the west city limit.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right. This very time, because I got inquiries over the weekend from residents about this. They've been seeing a lot of the pre, pre, pre-work on the, on Alondra Boulevard. So my question is, for the benefit, was there a timeline when the RFP was issued, when it's going to be completed, how many days upon awarding of the contract?
I think, I think the total working days in the contract are, I believe it's 90 days, 90 or 120 days.
Oh, really? That quick?
Yeah, yeah. Once the company gets in here, they'll, they'll go really fast.
So by the end of the year, it should be done?
Should be, yes.
Okay, all right, that's it. Thank you so much.
That was easy. I have something.
I thought it was going to be a quick one.
Yeah. Did we, on Alondra side, we talked about Duruthem Crosswalks?
At, at Alondra and Somerset intersection?
No, at Alondra and Bellflower.
Yeah, Alondra and Bellflower, yeah, intersection. There will be Duruthem Crosswalks and the...
The center thing?
Flower logo there.
Similar to Artesia and Bellflower.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, good.
Yeah, all right. Okay, good. I told you it's going to be quick. All right, make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Let me do something.
Okay, we got a...
Sorry.
We got a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Sany for the consent calendar, and a second by three or four people. Coops.
Give it to Coops. I relinquished that second.
All right, so without objection, that'll be the order. Anybody have anything to say in reports, or if you want to report out and anything, or you want to go home? What is, what is your pleasure?
Reports.
Just say something, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just real quick, I just want to commend Parks and Rec Department for a very successful concert department last Saturday. It was the Bellflower Symphony Orchestra. They did a fantastic job. Attendance was really good. I think we're going back to that attendance at, at Carradas Park. So kudos to Bellflower Symphony Orchestra and our Parks and Rec Department. And also, I want to congratulate and welcome officially Yummy Yummy Bionicos, who had a grand opening two weeks ago. And then last week, Cassie Rocks, one of the kiosks on Belmont Street. So welcome to the seat of Bellflower. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Coops, you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Morse.
It's all been said.
And Mr. Sanchez. It's been a long night, and thank you all for coming, and I don't have much to say. I think I said it already. So I'm going to call for adjournment tonight to the next regular meeting of the City of Bellflower Council at 5:30 PM on Monday, September 8th.
Okay. That's a wrap.
You went all the way around the world.
Yeah.
Got through that last...
Hey Fred, how you doing?